Do I have to hit the gavel to power?
You don't have to, but you can.
Okay.
I think you should. You should hit it as hard as you can.
This is the call to order for the September 25th, 2025 meeting of the Santa Clara County Planning Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll call?
Good evening. Commissioner Hutterly.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Levy.
Here.
Commissioner Escobar.
Present.
Vice Chairperson O'Donohue.
Present.
Chairperson Rousier.
Present.
You have a quorum. Commissioner Belska.
Present.
Thank you.
We still have a quorum.
Still have a quorum. An even better one.
Please stand if you are able to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mark Rousier. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission. On behalf of the commission, welcome to today's meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute all electronic devices, including cell phones that may interrupt the meeting. The first item on the agenda is public comment. This item is reserved for persons who wish to address the commission on any matter within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on this agenda. While they're doing that, the law does not permit commission action or extended discussion on any item not on the agenda except under special circumstances. Members of the public who wish to address the commission on a non-agendized item should request to speak at this time by giving a request to speak form to the deputy clerk if you're in the chambers or by using raised, the raised hand icon if attending virtually. Do we have any speakers for item three?
We have no speakers in chambers and we have one speaker in the Zoom room who just lowers their hands, so we have no speakers.
Okay. Item number four is the approval of the consent calendar and changes to the commission agenda. Does the commission have any comments on that or would like to submit a motion?
We approve the consent agenda.
Hold second.
Before we vote on it, is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item?
We have no speakers.
Perfect. We have a motion to accept the consent calendar and a second. Motion was Hutterly, Commissioner Hutterly, and second by O'Donohue. Can we take a vote?
Apologies. Was this second by Commissioner Belska or by Vice Chairperson O'Donohue?
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Hutterly.
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen.
Yes.
Commissioner Belska.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy.
Yes.
Commissioner Escobar.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson O'Donohue.
Yes.
Chairperson Rousier.
I approve.
Motion carries.
Next on the agenda, we have item number five, a public hearing to consider an appeal of the August 7th, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete an application for the Almaden Road Housing Development Project consisting of a major subdivision and grading approval for 49 housing units and related amenities on an existing 19-acre parcel. The applicant, appellant representative, Michael LaBarbera, hopefully I'm close on that. Property owners, Jaylene and Morgan, trustee et al. Property address location is 19780 Almaden Road, San Jose, assessor's parcel number 742-07-001. The zoning is agriculture 20 acre dash SR, supervisory district five, file number PLN 24 dash 063 dash SB 330 dash APL 1, ID number 126137. Do we have a, does anyone have any ex parte communications they'd like to disclose at this point or cite as no? Okay. And then we'll get to the staff report.
Through the chair, this is Principal Planner Rob Salisbury, and we have Senior Planner Charu Aluwalia to give a brief presentation on this project to the commission.
And if I may, Jacqueline Nociano, the Director of Planning and Development. We also have our county council present as well, Nicole Collins is present in the box as well. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Charu Aluwalia, Senior Planner. The item before you is an appeal of the August 7th, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete a land use application for the Almaden Road Development Project. This is consisting of a major subdivision and grading approval for 49 housing units and related amenities. The project site highlighted in yellow is located in unincorporated county adjacent to the city of San Jose city limit and urban service area. The subject parcel is zoned exclusive agriculture with a lot size combining district of 20 acres and a scenic route overlay. General plan designation for the subject property is open space reserve. The surrounding uses include single-family residential development to the north, low density rural residential development to the south, El Amigos Creek to the east, and the Almaden Road to the west. The subject property is approximately 19 acres in size and the proposed housing development, as stated earlier, is for 49 housing units with related amenities, including a wastewater treatment system, stormwater retention basins, and interior roads. So before staff presents the analysis of the appeal. So before staff presents analysis of the appeal, it's important to understand the key milestones and dates associated with the application. On October 13, 2023, the applicant submitted a preliminary application for the Almaden Road Housing Development Project pursuant to the Housing Crisis Act SB 330. Thereafter, on February 8, 2024, the applicant submitted a second preliminary application for the same project. Under the Housing Crisis Act, submitted of a complete preliminary application vests the ability of the applicant to submit a formal application within 180 days. On April 5, 2024, the applicant submitted a formal application for the Almaden Road Housing Development Project. The county determined the project application was incomplete. the project application was incomplete and issued the first incomplete letter on May 3, 2024, with 58 incomplete items. Thereafter, the application went through four more rounds of review. On August 7, 2025, the county issued the fifth incomplete letter and determined that the application was still incomplete because it was missing six items. August 14, 2025, the applicant appealed the incomplete determination. So as mentioned on the prior slide, the fifth incomplete letter dated August 7, 2025 identified the six incomplete items which are portrayed on this slide. The items were to provide an energy conservation plan, to show land cover mapping prepared by a qualified biologist, to show base flood elevations and finished floor of structures proposed to be located in the floodplain, to provide a revised San Francisco Bay watershed questionnaire, to provide fire hydrant flow data, and to provide geotechnical evaluation of the liquefaction potential of soils under the proposed residences. All of these items were previously identified in the prior four incomplete letters. The appeal in front of the Planning Commission today relates to the August 7, 2025 incompleteness determination. Now moving to the grounds of the appeal. The appellant identified two main grounds for the appeal. The first ground of the appeal, the applicant asserted that the applicable application checklist are those in effect when the first preliminary application was submitted in October 2023, and that they have provided all of the items required by those checklists. As for staff's response, the Permit Streamlining Act requires that each public agency compile one or more lists that specify and detail the information that will be required by any applicant for a development project. So pursuant to this, the applicable application checklist is the one in place at the time a formal, not preliminary, application is submitted. The applicant submitted a formal application on April 5, 2024. The six incomplete items that are identified in the August 7, 2025 incomplete letter are all identified on the county's SB 330 checklist, which was effective well before the applicant submitted the initial formal application on April 5, 2024. However, even if the applicable checklist were the one in place when the applicant's first preliminary application was submitted, all six of these incomplete items which were mentioned earlier would still have been required by the county's application checklist for residential subdivisions and grading applications. I would like to highlight here that there was a supplemental attachment provided by staff, which is Attachment J, which included a summary of the incomplete items and how these items relate to the checklist. That applicant also provided an Exhibit B to the appeal letter with narrative against each of the six incomplete items, arguing that those items are complete. This exhibit is on page number 32 of the agenda packet. So staff provided a response to Exhibit B's claims in the staff report, and Attachment J also has a summary of staff's responses to Exhibit B. If desired by the Planning Commission, we can pull up this exhibit for more discussion after the presentation. As for the second ground of the appeal, the applicant asserts that the county erroneously determined that the applicant had only one 90-day period to complete an SB 330 application, and that the preliminary applications are expired. The county did state in the fifth incomplete letter dated August 7, 2025, that pursuant to Government Code Section 65941.1E2, preliminary applications related to this project have now expired and have no force and effect. However, that statement is not an incomplete item and is not within the scope of the Planning Commission's review. Pursuant to County Zoning Ordinance Code 520ADC, the only question before the Planning Commission today is whether the application, as it was resubmitted on July 8, 2025, was complete as of August 7, 2025. Before moving to staff recommendation, I would like to note that the total number of comments received on this item as of this evening are 294, which have been included as a part of the record. So to conclude, staff recommends that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the Department of Planning and Development's determination that the land use application for the Almeden Road Housing Development Project is incomplete. With this, I conclude my presentation, and we have representatives from planning, land development engineering, the Fire Marshal's Office, our county geologist, and County Council available to answer any questions that the Commission may have. Thank you.
All right. Before we open the public hearing, does any of the Commissioners have any questions for staff? Commissioner Hutterly?
Yeah, I'll say I'm glad we've been through one of these already. I think we all know a little bit more about the process than we did previously, but, and as I understand that our purview is not to, not to consider whether the vesting had expired, but only whether the application was complete by the August date. And my question for you is whether it is in our purview to consider what triggers the clock, if it matters whether it was the preliminary application or the formal application that triggered. I am assuming that is also outside of our purview. That's a county decision separate from the Planning Commission.
Elizabeth Fissers from County Council's office. Just to make sure I understand your question, are you asking about the comments made by staff about which checklist was the applicable checklist?
Basically, so in order to determine whether the application was complete by August, whatever it was, we don't have to answer the question of which checklist was in effect at what time.
That's correct, and I'll let staff say more about that.
Nicole Collins, Deputy County Counsel. I agree with Elizabeth. I think it's staff's position that it does not matter which of the applicable checklist is used, because the requirements are substantially the same. But in terms of, if I understand your question, in terms of the time that the applicant had to submit their formal application after the preliminary application was submitted, that is a function of state law, and there's no discretion of the Planning Commission to add or subtract to that time.
Thank you. So we're really only looking at whether or not the items identified as incomplete in, as of that August letter, had in fact been provided by that date.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Belska, do you have questions for staff?
I do have questions for staff, and, and I apologize, but I am going to dig a little further into this, just so we have all our ducks in a row and have all of this straight. So the county's checklist for residential subdivisions, when was that published?
Through the Chair. The residential subdivision and grading application checklist have been published prior to the October 2023 submittal of the preliminary application. So that's been in place with the county, on the county's website, and requirement for such applications for several years. I don't know the exact date when it was published, but it was effective when the preliminary application was submitted for this SB 330 project on October of 2023.
Okay. And that's the checklist that's used for any subdivision application, and it includes all of these items?
That is correct.
Okay. And then when was the county's SB 330 checklist published?
Through the Chair, I'll just take a moment to get the exact date.
If any of staff have that date, you can answer that.
I believe it's December 5, 2023, was the prior, the first version of the SB 330 checklist. But prior to that checklist, there was the existing residential subdivision checklist, as well as the grading approval checklist. I believe the department also updated and kind of reformatted their other residential subdivision and, and applicable checklist at the, around the same time as December 2023, but again, containing substantially the same requirements.
Okay, thank you. And then, so if it's December 2023, that would have been prior to the February 8, 2024 preliminary application. So that, that date is kind of important, right? Because then, is it before, or is it after?
So that is correct. We can have the applicant say more about their argument when it's their time to speak. My understanding is they are arguing that the, the preliminary application date is October, approximately October 2023, and though another preliminary application was subsequently submitted.
Can you explain how, how that works? Like, does, does one preliminary application overwrite the other? Or, I'm not sure why there's two preliminary applications.
So pursuant to SB 330, an applicant can submit a preliminary application in a period where the county is out of compliance with housing element law and doesn't have a certified compliant housing element. Many applicants chose to submit multiple preliminary applications, often with different versions of a project, or to give themselves more time. Once a preliminary application is submitted, the applicant has 180 days to submit their formal application pursuant to that preliminary application. And so we saw some applicants submit a later preliminary application to give themselves more time.
Does, I guess what I'm trying to get at is if a, if a second preliminary application is submitted, does that now mean the previous preliminary application is void?
Not necessarily. Under state law, a preliminary application is, either expires within 180 days if no formal application is submitted pursuant to that preliminary application, or, I suppose, an applicant could withdraw their preliminary application if they wanted to.
Okay, so, so both preliminary applications are currently essentially live and current simultaneously somehow? It's, it's, it's fine. It's, it's, it's a, I don't know if I'm the only one confused here, but...
I think academically that is possible, but here, the 180 days has long passed on both of these.
Sure, sure. No, no, understood. Which of the, which of the preliminary applications was the one that the formal application then was based on?
Yeah, so through the Chair, this was the February 8, 2024 preliminary application
Okay.
under which the formal application was submitted.
Okay, okay. And then, again, just to see if I can get some additional information here, staff makes a statement that the checklist, the relevant checklist, is very specifically the one that is in existence at the time of the formal application, not the time of the preliminary application. But I have not been able to find the language in the code that states that, but the applicant did point to very specific language in 65589.5 that does say that the ordinance policy standards adopted, and in effect, when a preliminary application, including et cetera, et cetera, was submitted. So I would like to understand where staff is basing their argument that it's the formal, that it's at the time of the formal application, not at the time of the preliminary application.
So that interpretation comes from the interaction of the Permit Streamlining Act and the Housing Accountability Act. So the Housing Accountability Act is Government Code 65589.5 that you quoted from. It does say that an application or a project is only subject to the ordinances, policies, and standards in place at the time the pre-app was submitted, invested. The department isn't seeking to apply new ordinances and policies. The checklist merely reflects the ordinances, you know, the information that is required to verify the project's, you know, compliance with the applicable ordinances and policies and standards. And the department is taking the position, the checklist itself is not an ordinance, policy, or standard. We might just have a disagreement with the applicant on that definition, but the Permit Streamlining Act, which is in the government code, specifically Section 65942, talks about making revisions to the applicable application checklist just for any development project, and says, you know, revisions don't apply prospectively, but they apply, they, they apply if the revision to the checklist is effective before the application was submitted. There's nothing in there that talks about vested preliminary applications. Again, it, it might just be a difference in legal interpretation that we and the applicant have.
Okay, so, so you're reading, so you're reading the language of SB 330 to mean that it's, it's essentially the ordinances that were in place at the time, not necessarily the checklist that was in place at the time. And you're saying the ordinances were in place predating, even predating, let's say predating the checklist, the ordinances were still in place?
That's correct. The department isn't seeking to apply any new sort of substantive requirements that a project would need to meet. It's only, the checklist only refers to the information that allows the department and then eventually the Planning Commission to evaluate these projects against the existing ordinances.
Okay, sure, sure. That, that makes sense. I do have another follow-up question, but I want to maybe let others...
Just continue.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, so then my other question, again, is a clarifying question, and, and I understand that this is not something that we are allowed to vote on or consider, but I would like to understand what happened between incomplete letters one, two, and three, and then suddenly incomplete letter four stating that they only have 90 days? Because that was a fairly dramatic change.
So the, the most notable happening was the certification of the county's housing element. And so before the housing element is certified, as I mentioned before, an applicant has the opportunity to submit a new formal application, or revest their project, or vest their project by submitting a complete formal application. That's actually, we haven't seen that happen in the county, but that is the other option to vest a project under the builder's remedy, is to just straight, first submit a complete formal application. So the applicant, up until certification of the housing element, still had an opportunity to revest themselves.
Okay, so you're saying when the housing element was approved, that triggered a 90-day maximum period for approval, for completeness?
So the, the 90-day period was always part of the law, but the reason the department didn't include that in prior incomplete letters is in recognition of the fact that the applicant could theoretically submit their complete application to vest themselves.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Commissioner O'Donohue?
I've got food in my mouth. On July 8, they resubmit their, I think for the last time. Is any of that in the packet, in our agenda packet, what they actually submitted? Like, their, the actual documents, or however that's, however that gets to you guys?
Yeah, through the Chair. That's not in the items packet today being considered for the appeal hearing. We have all the incomplete letters that were a part of the record as a part of the attachments, but we don't have each of the submittals that were submitted through the year for the project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Just to follow up on that last question. So we're being asked to find out if the information they provided satisfied the requirements, whether it was complete or not complete. And yet, we do not have access to what was submitted. Am I... yet, we do not have access to what was submitted. Am I understanding that interpretation of what we're doing right now?
If I could, through the chair, those plans are available on our county website. We have an SB 330 page that has all of the applications, information, and plans for those projects.
So that would include the different studies, the gradings, reports, and all that stuff? Is anything that is in contention here about complete or incomplete?
It includes the plan sets, not every single submittal item, but it includes the plans.
If I may, through the chair, what's being asked of the commission is, were the items on the checklist submitted? Not were they up to par, not were they, you looking at them and telling the staff, the analysis of the content of the items, but on the checklist, did the applicant submit the items on the checklist? Am I saying that incorrectly? If I am, clarify for me.
I think sometimes there can, and I'm not saying this is about this, but, you know, for the completeness determination, sometimes there is an issue of, the applicant says, I submitted this, and the department says, you didn't-
That's what I'm seeing.
It's not what we're asking for.
One says, I submitted, the other says, no, you didn't, and we're not allowed to look at it.
Yes.
Am I, am I understanding this correctly?
Through the chair, there are some items that are completely missing, and then there are some items that were submitted but lacking complete information, or containing inaccurate or contradictory information. So in this case, it's a combination of both things. But there are several items that were on the checklist that were noted as incomplete items that simply were not submitted by the applicant.
If I may, through the chair, if it's the request of the commission for us to get those items, we can certainly do that. If you want to recess, we'll get them for both projects.
In my humble opinion, if there are some items that are truly missing, we don't have to go to that path. But going forward, I would like to formally declare that if we're supposed to say something was received or wasn't received, rather than just a report that says, trust us, I would like to just see, because if all of this stuff is public information anyway, let everybody see it. So, I'm sorry, I'm, we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion at this time. Excuse me, just a second. We will start with, is the appellant wishing to speak? That would be 10 minutes, followed up by people either here or online. So please submit a card if you are wishing to speak on this item, or raise your hand if you're online. Do we-
To the chair, we do have Kurt Anderson from Anderson Architects, and Travis Brooks from Miller, Starr, and Regalia on behalf of the appellant and applicant.
We also have a letter from HCD addressed to the county, I think, on August 27, 2025, that I'd like to add to the record. It's on the 90-day vesting issue.
Are we ready? Let her pass these out, otherwise you guys are talking and we're trying to partially read, partially listen.
Mr. Chair, if you want a couple of minutes to read that letter before we start, that might be appropriate to what we're going with our discussion.
We don't know what's on it, so do you think that would be helpful?
I think you need to read that letter.
Okay, so let's take five minutes, and we'll read this. I do apologize for the delay. We still have a few seconds on it, but we have to do roll calls, so can we do that without waiting?
Commissioner Heatherly?
What am I responding to?
That you're here.
We have to do another roll call following recess. Commissioner Cohen?
Present.
Commissioner Belzke?
Present.
Commissioner Levy?
Here.
Commissioner Escobar?
Present.
Vice Chairperson O'Donohue?
Here.
Chairperson Rousher?
Present.
You have a quorum.
End awake. So, for the public, the item that we received was a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development with Gavin Newsom as the author, headliner on it. So, and this was presented at the last meeting, and so we had actually received it and were familiar with it. And so, I don't know if we need to read it into the public record at this point, but anyway, so that's why we didn't all scramble and bury our heads in it, just so you know. Go ahead and, you have 10 minutes. Thank you.
Have we started yet? Is this thing on?
There's a microphone in the podium.
Oh.
Yeah, stand at the podium. It should pick up your voice.
Yeah, I'll just say really quickly, Travis Brooks, Landes Council for the applicant. So there are two projects that you're considering here tonight. We both work on both projects. So a lot of what we're going to say for the Almaden project is duplicative of what will apply for the next project. So luckily, you don't have to hear it thrown on twice. That's a real benefit, so.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Kurt Anderson. I'm principal of Anderson Architects. It's a pleasure being here tonight. I got to say, the staff did a great job on the report. I didn't like the report, but I still think they did a pretty good job on it. We've been working with staff through this process on both projects, and we've been pushing back on certain items. So one is the Energy Conservation Plan. Now, you all know what that is, but I'm sure the audience does. But I didn't know what that was. We thought it was talking about how we're going to do energy-efficient buildings, et cetera, et cetera. It really is a shadow study plan. Well, as part of our application, when we became vested, we did not have to provide architectural plans for this part of the subdivision. I can't do a shadow plan without a building. You know, I can't create shadows because we don't know what the structure is going to be. So we've been pushing back with staff from that on day one. That's an irrelevant request. The second item that we pushed back on the whole time was a geotechnical report. We have no problem doing it, but we can't recommend to our client that we spend $150,000 on geo-tech reports until we know we have a project that's going to move forward. Then we have no progress. So we've been pushing back on that whole time. So I wanted to make that very clear to the commission, that we've been working with staff, but they're not being us. And now, for us, nowhere in any of the applications does it tell you that you only have five times to be deemed complete. Nowhere, under state law, and I'm going to let Travis address this, is that we can keep going and going and going until we get this thing resolved, okay? And some of this was a pushback on the staff, like you said, the Energy Conservation Plan, the geotechnical. We believe we still can continue to work on this project. We think this, the whole thing of the staff saying, oh, you're incomplete, so you're losing your vested rights, is absolutely against state law. And I'm going to let Travis know that. I'm the architect. But we've been working with staff. So I just want to tell you, we feel that we need, we should be able to keep going, and we think this hearing is actually irrelevant, and we shouldn't even be here. We should be working on the project. So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them. Let's let Travis do his thing.
Thanks, Kurt. Appreciate it. Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of things, too, that were mentioned during the staff report. There was reference to the October preliminary application is the one that we're proceeding under, October of 2023. There was also a preliminary application submitted in February of 2024, which was a, which was a version of the project or an alternative that was larger, that the applicant, for various reasons, decided not to move forward with. So as the cover letter for the formal application to the instant project that you're considering made clear, we were proceeding under the project as included in the October 2023 preliminary application, which is entirely appropriate under state law. You're allowed to submit a couple of different preliminary applications and choose which one to proceed with. And it's an important flexibility. So as the staff report noted, the applicant submitted its SB 330 preliminary application in October of 2023, and then timely submitted its formal application for a vesting tentative map in April of 2024. I can assure you that, given the very broad definition of the ordinances, policies, and standards adopted, and in effect at that time, that are vested under state law, that are spelled out in 655-89.5 subdivision 04, that expressly includes requirements and policies, that the checklist in place at the time in October of 2023 is in fact the checklist that applies, not the later adopted checklist. So going back to the submittal of the preliminary application, because the county had not adopted a substantially compliant housing element at the time, the project is subject to the benefits of the builder's remedy, the Housing Accountability Act, and remains vested under Senate Bill 330. Therefore, the project is only subject to those requirements adopted, and in effect in the county, in October of 2023. In a year and a half since the applicant submitted its formal application, staff have delayed the processing of the application by requesting reports, technical details, and other items not listed as required for completeness purposes on the county's relevant project application checklist in effect in October of 2023. And that's this subdivision checklist, and I believe there's a grading checklist attached to it that was in place in October of 2023. Our appeal, sorry, you want to take that? Second, and extremely problematically, I know that staff have said we can't appeal this now, so our only choice apparently will be to seek litigation. The county's August 7th and August 1st letter for the project you're going to hear later, in an attempt to kill both projects, staff take the position in those letters that the project applications lost their vested rights under SB 330 because the county did not find the project applications complete with their latest resubmittals. The county is not alone in this, as multiple other jurisdictions troubled at the prospect of builder's remedy projects they cannot disapprove under state law, have tried to push the same extremely narrow and erroneous reading of the Permit Streamlining Act to deny such projects their vested rights. HCD has rejected this approach in at least half a dozen different jurisdictions, and the only two trial court decisions to address this issue have squarely held that the county's position that we somehow lost our vested rights are wrong. So there's a lot going against the county's interpretation here. As housing laws have been strengthened significantly in the past six years, local agencies have turned to procedural tactics to stall and ultimately kill housing development projects protected by state law. To address these tactics, earlier this year, with AB 1893, the legislature added a number of provisions to constrain local agencies during the completeness process. To do so, it added the following action to the HAA's definition of actionable disapprovals that can be subject to an HAA lawsuit and all the penalties that come with that. One, a disapproval can occur where a local agency determines a housing development project application is incomplete, but a reasonable person would conclude that the application submitted, that the applicant submitted all of the items required as listed on the local agency's submittal checklist. So if a reasonable person will conclude we submitted them, we're deemed to have submitted them. Where a local agency determines a housing development project is incomplete and includes an item in that determination that is not listed as actually required on the applicant's, on the applicable submittal requirement checklist, and just third, as an example, or where a local agency makes a wrongful determination that a preliminary application has expired or otherwise lost its vested rights, as the county did here in its August notice of incompleteness for the project. As we noted in our appeal materials, I won't go into tremendous detail as to each item that we disagree with the county's incompleteness determination. In multiple regards, the county's August incompleteness notice violated those new provisions of AB 1893, as well as the Permit Streamlining Act. As I mentioned, multiple items still being requested were part of the county's SB 330 Housing Crisis Act checklist, which was adopted in December of 2023, two months after we submitted our preliminary applications. There's reference to a geotechnical evaluation study and other studies that are listed on this checklist as possibly being required, or materials that may be required before you go to hearing. The Permit Streamlining Act allows for this, but very clearly, under the Permit Streamlining Act, for application completeness purposes, application requirements have to be the same for each applicant, and they have to be actually required. For items listed as potentially required, the county can request those items, but only after, or require them for processing, but only after the project application is deemed complete. And that is spelled out very clearly in government code Section 65944. Kurt already talked about the Energy Conservation Plan, based on the fact that we're only proposing a subdivision. Even your own code allows for less detail in the Energy Conservation- Even your own code allows for less detail in the Energy Conservation Plan. We feel we've submitted the detail that's feasible based on the fact that we're only proposing a subdivision at this time. It would be a complete waste of money and time to show you an Energy Conservation Plan for architectural features that we don't know precisely are going to be there. So we're just asking the county to be reasonable here and comply with what we think their code requires. So again, even if the commission does not deem the project application complete, it must direct county staff to follow state law by honoring the project's vested rights. The only two trial courts to consider this issue, both in Los Angeles, where they dealt with this issue earlier, have ruled squarely against the county's position. The applicant gets an unlimited number of resubmittals after a local agency finds an application incomplete. It's an iterative process. It's very complex. There are a lot of details required. It's not always clear, and it's a back and forth. But every time the applicant resubmits, they get another 90 days after they receive an incompleteness notice. And that's how it's billed. That's how it's worked. That's how it works everywhere else outside of the housing context. State law would not impose a stricter requirement on housing projects when it's trying to propose or trying to promote housing production. And that's what the county's interpretation is here. So we're up.
All right, thank you. There may be some questions, so. Commissioner Belzka, do you have some questions? Okay.
Just one quick question. The applicant was referring multiple times to this checklist. Do we have that, the document?
It's in your staff materials, I believe.
And is that which, is that the SB 330 checklist, or is that the subdivision checklist?
It's the subdivision checklist. The SB 330 checklist was adopted and were put into place in December of 2023.
This is prior to that.
Okay. And that's the one that we have in the packet? Okay. Thank you. Both of them are in the packet?
Could I have staff bring up Exhibit B for this item? Where it has the little matrix of, was it seven items?
Through the chair, are you referring to Exhibit B of the appeal letter or the attachment G that staff provided comparing the incomplete item with the checklist and the responses?
Yes, please.
Yes, sure.
Can you just explain to people who may not have seen this before what we're looking at?
Yes, through the chair. So this exhibit is a comparative of the six remaining incomplete items as of the August 7, 2025 incomplete letter. We've listed that on the left by comment number. And then under column C is the checklist requirements from the county's SB 330 formal submittal checklist. This is the one which was adopted in December 2023. Column D is the county's prior application checklist for residential subdivision and grading applications. And then in column E is the appeal Exhibit B and staff responses to the applicant's arguments relating to the incomplete items being complete.
Okay, so on item one, column D, is that referring to the, was that October 2023 checklist?
That is correct.
Okay. And that calls for an Energy Conservation Plan if it's proposed one or more lots under one acre?
That is correct. So that same checklist requirement is in our current SB 330 formal application checklist, as well as prior application checklist.
Okay. And I'd like to ask the applicant, do you feel you have submitted information that satisfies Section C 12 through 173.2?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you please stand in front of the mic?
Stand over there.
Thank you.
That will get you. Thank you.
My voice carrying, so. So we actually prepared what we felt was an Energy Conservation Plan. We described how the structures were going to be built, the energy measures that we're installing in the facilities, talked about water, we talked about photovoltaics and all this kind of stuff. But the county, the planning department, said the Energy Conservation Plan is a shadow study, like I said earlier, where he didn't submit any architectural drawings with this because that was a part of the application at that time. So it was pretty hard for me to design a whole bunch of shadows for buildings that we haven't designed. So we've pushed back on that, but we felt that we'd given the information, this is what we are going to include in our project as it moved forward. These were the Energy Conservation Measures. Staff disagreed with us, okay? We felt that we answered that question. But what that really should say on your application, you need to do a shadow study and not say Energy Conservation Plan because in architecture, that's two different, that's two different items, okay? So yeah, we feel we addressed with that.
Okay.
Yeah, I just have a comment. I mean, you know, I know that staff has taken the position that we can't appeal on the vesting issue, but this back and forth right here and the level of detail and the level of disagreement you can have over what I would say are subjective standards in the code are exactly why it's an iterative process, and there are multiple resubmittals that occur.
Understand. Item two, did that change at all? We're still looking at the October 2023 list there?
Yeah, I looked at, I think we pushed back on that from, because of the initial application, that is where it says it may be required. It's not on the basic cover sheet. So our pushback, we're not going to do that until it's time after we've been deemed to complete.
Yeah, my understanding is that the checklist requires the coverage screening form, which we required, which we submitted.
Right.
And then depending on the information contained in that form, after the application's deemed complete during the environmental review process and clarification process, that additional data can be provided and required prior to hearing.
Okay. Item number three, the tentative map?
Well, that was, well, there's, this is, I think, where Rob had talked about, that there were some discrepancies in the information and some things to be coordinated. So it's in there, but there are some things that need to be cleaned up. But that, in other communities that we work in, LaScada, we're doing several builders' remedies here. I know the planning director knows about these things because we're in LaCce's with the city over that. Again, how many times can we go through this process, right? But they have complete items and they have consistency items. In LaScada, this clarification, the information on drawings would be a consistency item and not a complete item. So again, it's how you interpret this information. So we've had submitted the tentative map. There's some things that need to be cleaned up, and that's part of the normal process that we go through, work with the jurisdictions.
Okay, and but do you feel you submitted enough to satisfy that requirement?
Yeah, to make a determination.
C 12 through 20B9?
Are you still talking about number three?
Three, yeah.
Yeah, we submitted enough so we could find out if we need to go further, which we would have after we were deemed complete. Again, we don't mind doing all these reports, but we have to have a project. I can't tell my client it's been 200,000 bucks.
Through the chair, we do have exhibits relating to this item, and we do have LDE staff. If you would request additional information, we can provide the visual exhibits. It's a part of the presentation.
That would be helpful.
Would you prefer to do that now or as you go through the full list and come back?
How long will it take you to bring them up?
Yes, I can prep to bring it up, and we can request David Dorcic, who's a land development engineering representative here today, to also provide more clarification on that.
Okay.
Through the chair, to answer your question, we can bring that up very quickly. It's a slide in the presentation.
Because all these people want to give their input, and I don't want to delay it, so.
And the last real big item, obviously, is that geotechnical report. And we told staff, we'll do it, but we got to know we have a project. And we had the staff, and they kept pushing back, and we kept pushing back. And again, that's on this checklist. It is may be required. It's not on that first page, okay? It's not on the first page. So that was our position. Now, we want to continue working with staff, like Travis says, we have this whole reiter thing that we could go until we get all these details worked out. It's all these projects are complex. There's a lot of items that need to be, so there's a lot of times you got to go back and forth with staff to get everything just dialed in. So the information is the way they want to have a scene. Really, what our request is, is, like I said, we just want to be able to keep working on the project and work with staff on these details. And for the staff to come out of the clarib, oh, you're incomplete on your application resubmittal, so you lose your vested rights. What?
Okay. So what requirement are we dealing with here? If you could just read what you think was not satisfied? Staff?
So that their request was that for, on the tentative map, that the limits of the floodplain be shown with the base flood elevation shown on the tentative map. The limits of the floodplain are shown, but the base flood elevations are not shown on the tentative map.
Clarification of information. That's what he's asking for.
And that had to do with the level of the floor and everything, comparison of that, or was that something different?
Has to do with the level of the dirt as a relation to floodplain.
Right.
It's to show the effect of the project on the base flood in the floodplain. There's also buildings proposed within the floodplain, and the elevation of the finished floors of those buildings was not provided with the submittal.
Okay, and that, what you just read was on the checklist effective October 2023? That specific item, or this is part of something broader that you're saying that that's a piece of information that you need?
This requirements on the checklist in reference to the requirements of a tentative map within the code.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, let me point this out. I've been doing this for 50 years. I just entered my 50th year of architecture. I've done a ton of work in the county over the years. But this is a very typical thing. We'll submit a document to the staff, and they'll go, make this little change, do this a little change, and it's all part of the process. We go back and forth until everybody's covered. What he's talking about has nothing, we did the work, it just needed to clean it up a little bit, but we submitted the plan. So in our opinion, it's not incomplete.
Can we bring up item four, then?
Through the chair, I request that we bring back the spreadsheet. There's no exhibit for.
I'm sorry, the spreadsheet, item four on the spreadsheet. I thank everyone for your patience right now. So did you submit a clean water program questionnaire?
Yes, we did, but they changed the application. They wanted us to redo the original application. So yes, we submitted originally.
Okay. Item five?
That's one of those informational things. We showed the plans, but we've been working with San Jose Water on that, and that's probably still outstanding. But again, that would be something as we go through this project, we'd get that resolved. And then number six is a geotechnical. We've already discussed that a couple of times.
So you did not provide a geotechnical report?
Our position was, it was not on the cover sheet of the requirements for submittal.
Understand.
It may be added. That means after we go through the process, you get deemed complete, then you do the work.
Got it.
The second sheet is after being deemed complete, first sheet is being completely. So the real, only real issue on this sheet is that Energy Conservation Plan, and we prepared something, we submitted it at our first submittal, saying how we were going to make this thing a very energy efficient project. In our opinion, that answers that question.
Right.
We didn't do a shadow study because we don't have any buildings.
I understand. Commissioner Cohen, do you have questions for?
I just, I'm not sure who the question is for, but the point that was just made about the question about the document that was submitted and then not resubmitted because of your analysis of how it was presented on the front page, is there a choice for an applicant about whether or not they resubmit for any of those items deemed missing? Do they get to decide whether they do that or not? I mean, that seems to be a question. So I'm just trying to understand what the flexibility is for the applicant compared to the expectation for there to be updates once a list of what is deemed missing has been communicated.
You want me to address that? Okay.
Thank you. I'm asking staff.
Okay.
Are we good?
Yeah, we're good. Thank you. If you can go ahead and address that now, and then we'll continue on with the public.
Yeah, through the chair, as was noted previously, it's the department's responsibility to establish a checklist of required information, and it is not up to the applicant or submittal, a person making a submittal, to determine what's appropriate or what's not appropriate. It's county's obligation and responsibility to create that checklist and require the applicant to submit those items on the checklist.
So it's the position of staff that if something may be required, then it still has the same force and effect as something that is required, depending on the type of project?
Submittal items can be complicated and sometimes nuanced, but that's why when we receive an initial application, we do a thorough review and clearly point out those items that are required. And so, as you might imagine, for some applications, it's very obvious initially exactly what's required. But for example, the habitat land cover mapping, not every application requires that because not every property has endangered species that require biological surveys to verify whether they're present at the time or whether there's habitat. And so that's an item, that's an example of an optional item, which is not always required, but it's required dependent on the specific property and, in some cases, the specifics of the application. So again, staff's position is that that is an item that may or may not be required based on the specifics of the application, but if it is required based on that application, it is not an optional item. It has to be submitted when the application is submitted.
Through the chair, I'd also like to add, in addition to what Rob Salisbury shared, is that if one looks at incomplete item number six, there's the incompleteness on the geotechnical evaluation of the equifaction potential. And our checklist very clearly clarified that the county's geologist and their contact number is provided, as you can see in column C under six, that the discussion of the scope of the required report must be done prior to submittal of that geotechnical report. So it's laid out that the scope of the report based on the site specific requirements must be discussed with the county geologist. And that's been established, and those comments were provided in all of the incomplete letters that are in the packet. So that's an example.
So any and all in that column D were provided on your first, because you have to, you can't add to them later, so they have to be on that first one, and you're saying all of those were on the first one?
That is correct. Yeah.
If we can just start with a public hearing, do we know how many? Oh, you have one, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hutterly, that's where the vice is supposed to kick me.
I just have a quick question. So as I look at the incomplete letters, there's no conditionality in those letters about you may need to do a geotechnical report. The letter says you need to submit a geotechnical report. So can we presume then that, while the checklist has that conditionality, because it has to apply to every project, before sending the letter, staff has determined that, yes, you meet all of the requirements to, or all of the circumstances such that you do have to do this report, and that's why it's phrased that way in the letters?
That is correct. It's a requirement, and we have ordinance code sections which do require that for several of these items. Yeah, so there's Energy Conservation Plans, there's also the Clean Water Questionnaire. So we've made reference to that in staff response under column E. So, you know, it's a part of your packet. You know, we can talk about it more as well.
And each of those studies where you had determined it was, in fact, required, those were called out in each of the multiple incomplete letters.
That's correct. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions before we open it up further? How many requests do we have to speak?
We have six speakers in chambers and one moment for the Zoom room. There is anyone else who wishes to speak? Please use the raise hand icon. We have two speakers on Zoom for a total of eight, which would normally be two minutes each.
Yeah, we'll go with the two minutes then.
If, if the following speakers could approach the podium in any order that you wish, and please be sure to state your name when you begin speaking. Steve Wilkinson, Mike McKee, Denise Akom, Richard Chen, Keith Lubliner, and Alice Kaufman. And you will have two minutes to speak.
Hello, members of the planning commission. My name is Denise Acom and my family and I live in Almeden Valley, the site for the proposed development at 1978 Almeden Road. I am asking you to reject the appeal of the August 7, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete an application for the Almeden Road Housing Development Project. The applicant, Mike LaBarbera, repeatedly failed to provide the information required by the county in order to deem the application as complete. In fact, the county courteously gave Mr. LaBarbera well over a year to submit the required information. Mr. LaBarbera had his many chances and he missed them. Therefore, I urge the planning commission to reject Mr. LaBarbera's appeal. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Wilkinson and I've been a resident of Almeden Valley for 45 years. I'm here tonight to ask you that you deny the appeal. I frequently hike Quicksilver Park out of the Mockingbird Hill entrance, which is less than a mile from the proposed residential development on rural zone for agricultural use. The surrounding area is a high fire hazard area. I have close friends that live within two tenths of a mile of this location. And last year, they got an update from State Farm where their insurance skyrocketed to three, or $30,000 a year, all right? Which is, they can't afford. So they're now living on the property, all right, in constant fear of fires. Note that one of the missing items on, on, on the staff checklist was the Almeden Road, for the Almeden Road project, was the fire hydrant flow data. I couldn't tell when you went through that, but I don't, I, I believe the developer has neglected to provide that relevant and important fire safety information. I urge you to reject their appeal. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Richard Chen. I live, I've lived in Almeden Valley for over 20 years. And I'd like you to support your staff in rejecting this application because as can clearly be seen from the many letters of incompleteness, the developer and his representatives even here today are putting forward a position that since they submitted their initial pre-application, that they can go forever, and he actually made this motion, forever, wrong and wrong, till, to complete this application, which we can basically can just say that it'll never satisfy him. Okay? So the lists are there. And as the deputy counsel mentioned, the checklist is just a checklist. It's the ordinances behind that checklist, okay, that they are saying are incomplete. So again, I would urge you to support your staff and not get into the nitty gritty of it, which we kind of tried to go through here, because there is no way the planning commission can have what the staff knowledge and their decision to reject this application, okay? And in their professional opinion, at some point, as the board, planning commission, you must accept what the staff has said, okay? As hard as it might be, because you want to get into the details and make sure you're making good judgments. But if they are going to make a mistake on this, the appellate has the courts to go to. Okay? So please reject the, support your staff and reject this application. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mike McKee. My wife and I and my daughter have lived in New Almeden for over 50 years. And we would like you to reject the builder's permit. For one, they didn't get it done in time, as has been brought out. They were given over a year and they, there, it's like the tail wagging the dog. They're trying to tell the county how to do their job. I think you are professionals, you were elected, and your staff are very professional. I've dealt with them. They know what they're doing. They have nothing against the builder. They just want them to do it right. A secondary point, as has been brought out, it's a very high fire area out there. And we're out in New Almeden. If there's a fire, we're going to be landlocked. We won't be able to get out. And I haven't heard anybody address whether they've even approached the fire department about whether this is a good idea or not. So I ask you to reject the builder on this.
Thank you for your comments. Just for the record, we are appointed, not elected.
Thank you. My name's Keith Lubliner of San Jose. Thank you, commissioners and Chairman Rousher. I'd like to also urge you to reject the appeal. It's been many recurrences of this and, you know, we need to follow the rules. I feel like they've submitted their term paper and they failed, so they want to resubmit it and resubmit it. If we keep adding windows in this, we have dozens of other projects like this and we'll be back here over and over and over. And I think, you know, that sets a bad precedent. I understand that the applicant feels that the requirements were unfair or they object to the requirements, but that's not within the purview of, of them. And. And anyway, so I urge you to reject the appeal and thank you for your time. It's a great room.
Good evening, Chair Rousher and planning commissioners. My name's Alice Kaufman. I'm the Policy and Advocacy Director for Green Foothills. And you received a, a letter that we submitted, a joint letter along with Santa Clara Valley Bird Alliance and Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. So I'm here speaking on behalf, not exactly on behalf of those organizations, but I'm here speaking to our letter that we submitted. One thing I really want to point out that we highlighted in the letter is that not only were there incomplete items, you know, that were supposed to be required, but apparently some of the information that was provided, provided was incorrect or confusing or unclear. I noticed in the staff report that when it came to the Bay Watershed questionnaire, which if you go to the questionnaire and you look at the specific item that was being asked for, it had to do with impervious surface, which is, which is very important when you need to understand stormwater runoff, erosion, how that's going to impact nearby creeks, which there is Alameda's Creek right downhill from this property. And the staff report commented that the, the impervious, the impervious area that was noted did not match up with the actual extent of development of the project, which is not possible. So we not only have missing information, we have apparently incorrect information. And the iterative process that's been referred to, how long are you supposed to iterate? How many times is the county, does the county staff need to ask for the information over and over and not get it? It doesn't bode well for the future progress of this process and of acquiring that information eventually. So I would agree with all the previous speakers and say that the deadline's been missed. Enough is enough and it's, it's time to, to deny the appeal. Thank you.
That concludes speakers in chambers. Turning to the Zoom room, we do have four hands, which still keeps us at 10 minutes or, 10 people or two minutes.
Two minutes apiece, thanks.
Our first speaker is Buford Barr. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking. Andrew, mic is open. We are not hearing you, however. Mr., Mr. Barr, if you could hold for one moment, I want, would like to try the next speaker. And if there is a problem with them, then I will ask our Zoom tech people in the background to see if it's a problem on our end. So I'm going to mute you briefly. Our next speaker is Joanne De Toro.
Hi.
Yes, please proceed.
Hi. I just wanted to say I have lived on Menoro Drive for 20 years. I'm currently in my backyard and the land is right behind me. It's beautiful and majestic. My concerns are, again, like everyone else, fire. The fact that we have about two ways to get to New Almeden and to our house. The congestion already from people taking our road to get to McKee, to go over to Bailey, to 101 now is absolutely atrocious. Just the whole thing is too much. We were told years ago that if this land behind us were to be sold off, it would be, to be sold off in three acre parcels. And now we're hearing that this, these houses, if, if happening, is going to be crammed 49 right behind us. The traffic, the noise pollution, the sound pollution, the, the chances of fire, it, it's just awful. It's awful. And I, I oppose this greatly and I know all of my neighbors do. And I stand in solidarity with everyone that stood up today and I thank you.
We're going to come back to Mr. Barr at the end. The next speaker is Mike McKee, which we had in chambers. We'll open your mic to see if this is a family member perhaps? The, the guest identified as Mike McKee, you've been asked to unmute. And they are not responding. We'll go on to the next speaker, which is Dr. Vincent. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Vince Lieber. I live on New Almeden Road, or Almeden Road. I've been a member of Almeden since 1971. The traffic out here has gotten considerably worse and the emergency plan is non-existent. So I, I go along with that. I also go along with the idea, you missed the deadline, you missed the deadline. I will point out to the board here, you, the commission, you guys started your meeting late. You had a six o'clock meeting. You guys didn't start till 6:06. I wish you met your meeting time. I'm really a stickler on date and meeting. And for the chair, it is your staff, and yes, you should trust what they are giving you to be what you need for your staff. So they, the applicants have missed their deadline. They, we don't need another 47 units out here. We're worried about septic running into our wash and our creek and the pollutants and the traffic and all else that goes along with that. So please follow your procedures, see what your staff is telling you and deny this applicant. Thank you.
Our final speaker is going back to Buford Barr. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
Can you hear me now?
We can. Thank you.
Great. Chairperson Rousher, finding commissioners, I'm Buford Barr, 40-year resident of San Jose and Almeden Valley. I've emailed you my support of denying the appeals for items five and seven for that matter. The developer has repeatedly missed procedural and content deadlines. He failed to provide critical information, including safety, environment, and wildfire. And then what about the impact on the infrastructure? The cost and availability of urban services? The availability and cost of utilities? The county staff was, was, was right. The application appeal should be denied. Good job there. And going forward, may we please focus on the impact of these projects will have on the lives and citizens of Santa Clara County and Almeden Valley. They're your constituents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
That concludes our speakers.
And with that, I will close the public hearing and check with any commissioners, have any further questions or comments?
Apologies to the chairperson, there is normally a rebuttal time for the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, reopen the public hearing and allow the applicant. 10 minutes to rebut if needed.
Chair members of the commission, hey, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. We do appreciate all the input, okay? So thanks for coming up and doing your part as citizens. I'd like to say I've been doing this a long time and this really helps us from a design professional to hear you guys' inputs and concerns. So we can.
Can you just keep talking towards the microphone, just so the people online can hear?
Anyway.
Thank you.
So I, it's not like we don't want to do the work, you know, the things that are, that are incomplete. We need the time to do it and under, under builder's remit, we can have a reiterate process, we can continue to submit. So we'd like you to basically say, you guys keep going to make sure you get the work done. I can work with staff and work these little nuances out. But we don't believe that, but if you, if you deny the appeal, then you're taking away our vested rights. And there's going to be a lot of repercussions of that. So we respectfully figure out, have you guys figure out how you can keep us going and move this thing forward? So thank you for your time and your interest in what we had to say.
Yeah, thanks. I really don't have much to add. I mean, we've provided so much written material. Yeah, I appreciate your time tonight. I have a feeling you're going to see a lot more projects in this situation based on county staff's position trying to fight builder's remedy projects. So thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, guys.
Thank you and, and everyone else who participated and came in, in support or to learn more about this. So I will again, close the public hearing and open it up to the commissioners. Commissioner Donahue?
Yeah, thank you. This is for staff. When an application is resubmitted, how does the county determine whether each item is complete or incomplete? Is it the something, is it that something was submitted or is the content judged at that point? That's my first question.
Yeah. Through the chair, once the application is resubmitted, planning staff would, to start with, route it to all the subject matter experts. So that includes Land Management Engineering, Department of Environmental Health, and so on and so forth. I can speak specific to planning and, you know, I can invite the others to also speak. We first would review if that deliverable that's, or the checklist item has been submitted. So giving example of the energy conservation plan, we want to see that exhibit in the plan set. So specific to this project application and the incomplete item, we did not see that exhibit in the plan set. So that's clearly an incomplete item because they did not provide an item that was requested from the checklist. Now going into another incomplete item of this project, which is the clean water questionnaire, based on the ordinance, which we have again in the exhibit B that I had mentioned about. The ordinance requires that at the time of the submittal of the clean water questionnaire, that questionnaire be submitted and approved at the stage of. that questionnaire be submitted and approved at the stage of the, at that stage. So it can be a combination. So with the clean water questionnaire, I can also, you know, request LDE professional here to support, you know, just the discussion on that. But we do have to check with the ordinance code and the requirements of that to deem an item complete in some cases.
And if I could just add through the chair, that when a resubmittal comes in, the department has 30 days to review that resubmitted application in its totality. And that is the time that the staff uses to determine both that whatever requested item was submitted, but also that it's sufficient and accurate for the purpose intended. And that's a requirement under the Permit Streamlining Act. Also just like to remind the Planning Commission that these SB 330 projects are by their nature housing projects. And for that reason, the department established an appropriate checklist, collect the information for housing projects that are required to allow the Planning Commission to make a complete and informed decision about the merits of the project.
Thank you. And regarding, you brought up the energy plan. You know, they said they submitted something, but it was obviously not what you were looking for. In your eyes, did they technically submit something for that category?
Through the chair, that exhibit was not submitted. The energy conservation plan was not a part of the plan set.
Okay. Next question. There was a lot of discussion about mays and shalls on the original application. At what point does a may become a shall?
Through the chair, that's a bit of a tough question to answer because it's very dependent on the specific item being requested. But again, all items on the checklist are required items. Some of them are listed as optional insofar as they are not necessarily required for each and every project, but may be required based on the specifics of the project and the specifics of the property on which the project is being proposed. Again, the example that I used previously was the land cover verification mapping. Not all properties have critical habitat or biological habitat, but for those properties that do, that are covered by the habitat plan, then for those projects, land cover verification mapping is required. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at. Offhand, does staff know how many SB 330 applications have been deemed complete so far? And a ballpark number is fine?
It's, we have deemed complete approximately 10 builder's remedy projects.
And I think there was at least 40 or 50 submitted?
There were approximately 40 preliminary applications submitted of those. Some have expired. There are now approximately 10 builder's remedy applications deemed complete and then another 20 that are in some stage of resubmitting or waiting for a submittal.
Okay. Thank you. And last question is, if the commission deems this application complete, does staff then issue a consistency letter where they still have to complete all these items to move forward to potentially building?
So if the Planning Commission were to deem this application complete, staff would provide the applicant with an inconsistency letter? And the project would also then undergo CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act review?
So they would still have to meet all these requirements? Is that what you're saying?
The requirements are, that need to be met are requirements sort of regardless of the stage of the application, but if I understand your question-
Sorry, specifically the six items that we're discussing. So if we say they're complete, then staff issues a consistency letter saying, you know, you still need to address, like, address those items we don't agree with what you submitted? Is that kind of the process?
So, not exactly, because the department would issue a consistency letter and that's based on the requirement in the Housing Accountability Act that the approving agency identify any potential inconsistencies with existing standards and policies within a specified period of time of application completeness. An applicant is not required to respond to that consistency letter. And because this is an SB 330 project, the county is also limited in what we can ask or require the applicant to change about their project or their submittals in order to comply with county standards. And so the applicant could, once deemed complete, you know, choose to proceed through CEQA review without addressing the consistency items. They could choose to address some of them. And ultimately, failure to address inconsistencies may or may not be a basis for project denial.
So walk us through, if you may, say the commission deemed it complete, you would issue a consistency letter and then what happens next?
Yes, we would issue an inconsistency letter and then we would proceed to analyze a project under the California Environmental Quality Act, determine what impacts a project may have as a result of approval, apply mitigation measures as appropriate through the CEQA process.
I would just clarify that that's correct and the applicant could choose to resubmit or clarify some of their information or revise their project based on the inconsistency letter. They wouldn't be required to do that and the county would not be able to hold up or wait on processing the application based on those items. County would be required to move forward, beginning CEQA review within a specified period of time and then completing CEQA review also within the specified period of time. So once the application is complete, statutory deadlines will begin to apply.
And so it wouldn't be like a green light to building, per se?
That's correct. It wouldn't, deem the application complete would not mean that the project would immediately be able to apply for building permits.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to just do a follow-up question, then we'll keep going down. Of the 10, well, let me first ask this. How many of the SB 330 projects require an energy conservation plan?
All of the projects require energy conservation plans, nearly all.
And the 10 that were deemed complete, completed that?
They were required to do so and yes, they were provided.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Commissioner Levy, I think you are next? Or no, Escobar?
I think you beeped me back a little seconds.
I did. I was waiting for Commissioner O'Donohue.
The water thing was in my way, I'm sorry.
My question goes to Commissioner O'Donahue's thread, that, for example, this is deemed complete, they move forward, goes into CEQA. I'm specifically looking at number five on this spreadsheet about the fire hydrant, about the fire risk. What I don't want to see happen here is that, and I just want to be sure that I'm taking this the correct way, is that items such as the fire risk, by not knowing the fire hydrant load and that sort of thing, would still be addressed at another point? Or it could be deemed complete? Because I think, and I'm bringing it up as the first one, but there's others that are extremely important as well on this list, because these are things that are pretty detrimental to not respond to. And I'm a little bothered by that. And I just want to be clear that to not respond to something that says, we need to know your fire hydrant flow, the load to fight fires, we need to know if there's a geotechnical issue about being able to put a house on a particular soil. I don't want these things to be overlooked in the case that my colleagues decide to go ahead and grant this. I mean, I'll be clear at this point, I am not leaning in the direction of granting the appeal. I'm, these are very important things that I don't think are may's, they are musts. And so I just wanted to kind of go down that road just a little bit and just make sure that I am reading this correctly, in that they would never be overlooked, whether it's this project or another project, things of that nature. That may be a better way of what I'm asking.
I would agree that particularly the fire flow information is critical information and were the application to be deemed complete, it might be difficult to get that information later. Perhaps county council would like to weigh in as well.
So CEQA review would take into account things like fire hazard and fire risk and the county can ask for additional information that it needs specific to environmental impacts during the CEQA process. But again, we're working on a statutory deadline and so I think what county staff is saying is they really want to have that information in order to begin the process and not be getting it partway through.
If I may, through the chair, would Chief Estrada, who's here, speak, could he, through the chair, speak to this item? It's on our, it's a request of information and deferring it. Maybe the chief would be able to clarify the request that is asked on our checklist rather than deferring.
Please enlighten us.
No, that's it right there, thank you. Well, as far as enlighten, I'll do my best. Fire flow requirements are one of those things that if we don't have, very early on, they're very difficult to make sure that the actual flow, even though there might be a hydrant located, that you're actually getting the right flow. It's a function of the square footage of the properties and then also how many. So it is absolutely essential that we have that information upfront. It is typical, well, actually, it's routine that we do get it and so not receiving it is unusual. And we will never be able to move forward without having that information. It is also one of those things that if it is not addressed upfront, it really could paint a project into a corner and make things very, very difficult to recover from. So it is absolutely, it is one of the two things we look at.
Do you provide that data of flow or does a third party do that?
We request it of the applicant.
And to answer your question, it's typically provided by the local water provider. We direct the applicant to contact that provider and ask them to provide to us the flow data provided to the local area.
Okay. Because I had to do that one time on Monterey Road and the fire department came out and so I was just curious.
Okay, I think I'm satisfied that I'm viewing it in the correct manner, that it is a, pretty much a reckless disregard for the safety of others around and for the project at hand to not address something so significant when it's repeatedly asked, time and time again, an incomplete letter. So I will yield to Commissioner Levy.
Great, thank you very much. And Chair Rouse, I appreciate you having him walk through this checklist because, so we could have a clear understanding of each of the issues. I tend to concur about the water, the fire hydrant, that's, that is critical and it wasn't provided. So I would have to agree that, you know, it's not a complete application when you get to that point. But, and some of the things I think are sort of gray and I'm glad you brought those to our attention and where there is room for debate between what staff is saying, what the applicant is saying. That's just not one of them. But I have a question on process as well. And that is, we're going to go through the CEQA process, I mean, if this goes through, we'd go through the CEQA process and if we find that there's unmitigated impacts, you know, severe unmitigated impacts, does the commission have the right to recommend denial of the project to council?
So under SB 330, there are limited, we'll call them four, limited bases for denial of an SB 330 project. There is one narrow exception, or one narrow finding for projects that will have a specific adverse impact on public health and safety. That has to be tied to an objective standard that existed at the time the preliminary application was filed. And so that is written really narrowly. It's not like a typical project where there is some discretion. The discretion will be really limited and it's hard to say before the CEQA review is complete and before the item comes before the commission, you know, what the options would be.
Now, what about with sensitive habitat? For example, rare and endangered species or, you know, they're ripping out all the trees to put for, you know, along a riparian corridor, things of that nature, which are very severe significant environmental impacts that are not mitigated? Is that a reason for denial on some of these projects?
Lead Deputy County Counsel, Elizabeth Visser. When any of these projects may come to the Planning Commission for actually a decision on the merits, which, as everyone knows, is not what we're here for today.
Yes, I understand.
The exact legal standards and what can, what can be the basis of a denial of a project will be very clearly explained and we're happy to answer any questions then. We don't want to get into hypothetical scenarios at this time for future potential approval or denial.
Okay, I won't jump the gun then. This is some of the questions that have been in back of my mind, these builder's remedy projects for a long time. And I just, I'd like that, you know, the staff to provide some of that information when the time is appropriate. The other one that I found really interesting was the San Francisco Bay watershed review where staff came and just said, what was submitted by the applicant wasn't even physically possible. Is that some, is that, can you provide a little more detail on that?
On the questionnaire, it breaks down the project by attributes from total area to new impervious, existing impervious, and so on. So on their presented form, the total land disturbed was less than the proposed new impervious, which is impossible for the project.
All right, great, thank you very much. Commissioner Belska?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, kind of on the topic that has been under discussion, there's obviously two very distinct stages in the review process, right? A complete application does not in any way imply that it's a compliant application, right? All that means is you have now received all the information that you need in order to make an assessment. Correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. So deeming an application complete does not in any way say that this, this project is a valid project or that is a compliant project or, you know, that it should, it should be approved. They're unrelated.
That is correct. Deeming the application complete simply means that they provided the items listed on the checklist are required for review and analysis of the project. And under the builder's remedy law, it is required that we provide at the time that an application is deemed complete, a consistency letter that enumerates any items that may be non-compliant or at variance with applicable codes or standards.
Okay, so my concern with this applicant, with this appeal and this hearing is it's really the same as it was last month. Based on what was presented today, I would tend to agree that the application is not complete, that there are missing items that are required. My concern is that I absolutely disagree with the interpretation of the 90-day time limit and that this, that the vesting has now expired, which basically puts me in this very difficult position to vote one way, one way or the other. That's, that's just my only- That's, that's just my only comment.
Commissioner Hederly.
I don't have any questions and since I'm at the end of the line here, I'm ready to make a motion unless others, if you're ready to welcome such a thing.
We have a question from Commissioner O'Donohue.
Thank you. Just, just to kind of reiterate, when an application is deemed complete, what protections does the county have to make sure that as it moves forward, it meets current county codes? And I think one of the items was SEQA, but is there anything else?
Yeah, I'm not sure I fully understand the question, but I'll try. So, there will be SEQA review to assess the impacts of the project and then the project, again, if deemed complete and once SEQA review is concluded, would come to the Planning Commission and then the Planning Commission would be tasked with determining in this case whether the project should be approved or denied based on the SB 330 statute. And there are, again, limited bases to deny the project.
Yeah. Oh, was somebody else going to say something?
Through the chair, there could be items and there could be rules or codes or standards that the project is not in compliance with, but if those are not items or codes that directly implicate health and safety, it could be that non-compliance with those codes is not a basis for denial of the application.
Thank you very much and, and I do share with Commissioner Belska's concern about the 90-day rule as well.
Okay, as do I on the 90 days. I just wanted, normally we don't necessarily address public comments, but we took an oath to be commissioners and to do that, we have to look at the details. Otherwise, we would be breaking our oath. So, I stand behind each one of these people, they do their homework, they kick the tires, they look at everything under the hood and so that, that's our job. So, I just want to not let that go unaddressed, that if we take a vote, it's because we feel like we have looked at it and we're making a informed vote on it. So, with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Hederly.
I'll go ahead and move that we deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Department's determination that the project was incomplete.
I'll second that motion.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Hederly and a second by Commissioner Escobar to deny the appeal and uphold the Department of Planning and Development determination that the application for the Almeden Road Housing Development Project is incomplete. Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Hederly.
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen, yes. Commissioner Belska.
No.
Commissioner Levy.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Escobar.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donohue.
No.
Commissioner Rousher.
I approve.
Motion carries five-two.
I would like to thank Senior Planner Alu Walia for that presentation and I just love your name, so I'd just like to say it over and over again, so. Thank you, everyone who participated in that, we're not done yet, but I just wanted to, again, thank you for your participation in this. With that, we will move to item six. Should I read the whole thing? Public hearing to consider an appeal of the July 29, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete an application for the Hill Road Housing Development Project consisting of a major subdivision and grading approval for 184 housing units and related amenities on eight existing parcels totaling approximately 50 acres. The applicant, Representative Gloria Ballard, MH Engineering, property owners EH Trail Family Limited Partnership and E&amp;H Third Family Limited Partnership. Property address location 16200 Hill Road, Morgan Hill, assessors, several parcel numbers listed here. In accordance with Government Code Section 65943D, Department of Planning and Development and applicant appellant have mutually agreed to a continuance to October 23, 2025. Anyone in, understand that? So, now we will go to item number seven. Are we okay?
Yes.
All right. Public hearing to consider an appeal of the August 1, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete an application for the Circle Hill Housing Development Project consisting of a major subdivision and grading approval for 18 lots for 20 housing units, 16 single-family homes and four accessory dwelling units on an existing 97.5 acre parcel. The applicant, Mike LaBarbera, property owner, Mike LaBarbera trustee, property address location 6591 Woodcliff Court, San Jose, assessors parcel number 575-20-037, zoning HS-D1, Supervisorial District 5, file number PLN 24-062-SB330-APL1, ID number 126126. Do we have any ex parte communications on this one? Seeing none, we can go to the staff presentation with Senior Planner Laura Tran.
Good evening, thank you so much. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Laura Tran, Senior Planner, presenting on item number seven. So, the item before you is an appeal of the August 1, 2025 decision by the Department of Planning and Development to deem incomplete a concurrent land use application for the Circle Hill Housing Development Project consisting of a major subdivision and grading approval for 20 housing units and related amenities. So, a brief overview of the project site highlighted in yellow, the property is located in unincorporated county adjacent to the city of San Jose, city limit and urban service area. The subject parcel is zoned HSD1, which stands for hill size with a design review combining district and a general plan designation of hillsides. The property is currently under Williamson Act contract with surrounding land uses that include single-family residences to the north and east, open space to the south and a quarry to the west. The subject parcel is approximately 97 acres in size and the proposed housing development, as I mentioned, is for 20 housing units and related amenities including wastewater treatment system, stormwater retention basins and interior roads. Before staff presents the analysis of the appeal, it is important to understand the key milestones, dates associated with this application. On October 8, 2023, the applicant submitted a preliminary application for the Circle Hou, Circle Hill Housing Development Project pursuant to the Housing Crisis Act SB 330. Under the Housing Crisis Act, submitting a complete preliminary application vests the applicant's ability to submit a formal application within 180 days. On April 5, 2024, the applicant submitted a formal application for the Circle Hill Housing Development. The county determined the project application was incomplete and issued the first incomplete letter on May 3, 2024. Thereafter, the application went through four more rounds of review and on August 1, 2025, the county issued the fifth incomplete letter. The county determined that the application was incomplete because it was still missing seven items related to planning, the fire marshal's office and county geology. Therefore, on August 14, 2025, the applicant appealed the incomplete determination. As mentioned in the previous slide, the first incomplete letter dated May 3, 2024 identified 47 incomplete items, including 12 items from the Planning Division, 22 items from Land Development Engineering, four items from the Department of Environmental Health, seven items from the Fire Marshal's Office and one item from the county geologist. After several rounds of resubmittals, the fifth incomplete letter dated August 1, 2025 identifies seven incomplete items that are summarized and include: a site plan that identifies all existing and proposed structures and legal access, a proposed floor plan and elevation plan, an energy conservation plan, obtaining a compatible use determination, as, as I mentioned, the property is in an existing Williamson Act contract, provide fire hydrant flow data and provide a geologic investigation report of landslide hazard zone. Moving to the grounds of the appeal, the appellant identified two main reasons for the appeal. As the first ground of the appeal, the appellant states that they have already provided all the information listed as required for the project application on the development application checklist adopted and in effect at the time the applicant submitted the project's preliminary application. Staff's response is that the applicable application checklist is the one in place at the time of the formal, not preliminary, application that was submitted. Even using the prior checklist, all seven incomplete items would have still been required. Additionally, staff provided a summary exhibit of the incompleteness items and staff's responses to the appeal as supplemental to the staff's report to aid the commission in its review of the appeal and staff can pull that document up if the commission desires. As for the second ground of the appeal, the applicant asserts that the county erroneously determined that A, the applicant only had one 90-day resubmittal to complete an SB 330 application and B, the preliminary application expired due to not meeting the 90-day deadline. The response from staff is that the question for the Planning Commission is whether to uphold the county's determination that the application was incomplete at the time the incomplete letter was issued on August 1, 2025. This ground for the appeal is not an incomplete item and is not within the scope of the Planning Commission's review. Before moving to the staff's recommendation, I would like to note that the total number of comments received on this item as of this evening are 294 comments, which have been included as part of the record. To conclude, staff recommends that the Planning Commission deny the appeal and uphold the Department of Planning and Development's determination that the land use application for the Circle Hill Housing Development Project is incomplete as August 1, 2025. This concludes staff's presentation. We have representative from Planning, County Fire, the county geologist to answer any questions the commission may have. Thank you for your time.
If we could just go ahead and bring up the slide that you were offering.
I assume the, the exhibit that you mentioned earlier?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and if you could just recap for me, on the last incomplete letter, when, when do 90 days expire from that?
From the, I'm sorry, the fifth incomplete letter?
Yeah.
So, the 90 days was from the fourth incomplete letter, which was, so that would make it July 17, 2025.
And so, nothing was submitted in that time period?
So, the applicant did not submit until, for the fifth incomplete letter, until it was July 3.
Is, is that in that timeline that you just gave? Can you just, I'm sorry, can you just bring that up again?
Sure.
So, on the, the fifth incomplete letter, the county is also saying that it was more than 90 days when you, when they submitted on the July 3?
Correct.
Or no?
No, in the fifth incomplete letter, the county staff stated that the applicant had failed to submit all the required materials within 90 days of the April 17 incomplete letter.
But they submitted stuff on July 3, but that's more than 90 days from April 17?
So, they submitted on July 3, which was within 90 days, but did not include all of the required information. So, by the time the 90 days, the 90th day arrived, still not all of the information had been submitted.
Okay, and was this the same scenario in the one that we just voted on?
I believe so, I don't know if it was exactly the timeline.
It is very similar to the item before, that was heard previously.
Okay, so, if I'm, if I'm understanding, the applicant resubmitted in July 3, so what is 90 days from that? No, I'm sorry, then, the county, the county gave it on August 1, so they, you guys replied within 30 days of July 3. And, and you're saying that does not trigger another 90-day period like all the other ones did? They'd still be in that 90 days now.
Yeah, that's correct, so, and this is where, you know, the applicant just objects to the county's position that there is a 90-day period to submit all of the required information. And again, the reason, it wasn't that new 90-day periods were being triggered every time the applicant resubmitted applications 1 through 3, it was that at that time, they still had the opportunity, the housing element wasn't certified, they still had the opportunity to vest a new application.
All right, I'm a little slow to the party here. Okay. So, why are we hearing the appeal, legal counsel, if the housing department is basically saying that window's still open and they could be providing that information tomorrow and still be within the 90 days?
We're hearing the appeal because the applicant has appealed and we're required to hear appeals from the applicant, to the extent that you're asking about the, the state law provision that says that, and I don't have it immediately in front of me, so I'm not going to quote it exactly, that an application shall expire and have no further, further force in effect if an applicant does not submit the items that were identified in an incomplete letter. If it does not submit those items that were missing within 90 days, then their application shall expire.
Okay.
And I might be able to clarify here. So, on April 17, the county issued the fourth incomplete letter and the applicant had 90 days from that date to submit a complete application. 90 days from that date is, was July 90 days from that date was July 17th. The applicant submitted, resubmitted their application on July 3rd, and then on August 1st, the county issued their, the fifth incomplete letter, that your application is incomplete and you're, you have lost your vesting as a result of not submitting a complete application within 90 days of April 17th.
Okay, the way I read that, that 90 days is still open and they could be submitting, and now I'm kicking myself because on the last one, I don't know how the dates, I thought they had already, they missed a true 90-day period, but this is still open. And, yeah, we're not supposed to look at it, but that's entirely unfair to the applicant to literally have an open window and be told, "We're sorry, we take a different position, you're out of luck, sue us."
To be clear, the department hasn't taken the position that they won't process a resubmit, and indeed, some applicants who were told they lost vesting still resubmitted, and the department is continuing to process those applications. The department and the county is taking the position that those applications might not be vested as builder's remedy projects, but we're still obligated, if an applicant resubmits, to process those applications and again respond within 30 days.
Mr. Chair?
So, let me chew on that a little bit, look at all the things. Commissioner Levy?
Yeah, I have a timeline question, too. My understanding is that the applicant has 180 days to submit a formal application after the preliminary application is received, is that correct?
They have, an application is vested for 180-day period, and yes, that clock starts running from the date that they submit their preliminary application. However, up until the time that the department has a certified housing element, the applicant may submit another pre-application or a complete formal application and still have a vested application.
So, after the housing element is approved by HCD, they have 180 days to, in essence, well, if they've submitted something prior to the housing element, that's a little confusing on the housing element and how that plays into it. But, you know, the preliminary application on here was October 2023, 180 days after that, long gone. And, you know, they had to submit a formal application in that 180, in that 180-day period, which gave them another 90 days. And so, you know, I think from the total, if you add them all up from October 2023, without the housing element component of it, they, in essence, have 300 days before everything expired to read, no further work, which is, again, long, long ago. Where does, I'm curious where the housing element plays in this and when the real clock started on a preliminary application?
So, the 180-day clock by statute starts on the day the applicant submits their preliminary application.
Which is October 8th, 2023.
So, you had that right, 180 days from October 8th to submit their formal application.
Hold on, hold on, you can't, no, we'll allow you your time, don't worry.
You know, which is 500 days ago. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious why we're talking about the timeline, when I'm, what I'm seeing here is that 180 days, no matter how you looked at it, with an additional 90, with the additional 30, is still long gone, so. And that's, I'm just curious, Commissioner Rousler, you know, how you see that differently?
Um.
And maybe staff can talk to that as well.
There's a memo right here that we looked at last week, and we looked at again, which I think seems pretty clear, that the California Department of Housing and Community Development basically says, if you're acting in good faith and submitting stuff...
Yes, right, right, and that's, and that's for the...
They did not say you can only have five bites at the apple, they said...
Right, but I understand that's out of our preview, that's, that lawyer, our lawyers versus their lawyers, and that's not what we're discussing, though, is whether that continues.
And that's why I'm asking legal counsel, why is that artificial barrier put in our way here? If we're asked to be saying, "Is this complete?" on a date, and we don't agree that that has expired and that window's still open, then it's an artificial question that we're being asked, and that's why I'm asking...
Thank you.
Again, is that window still open? Are there government agencies that would say that window is still open?
So, as I told you, there's the state law provision, right? It says in state law, which the legislature has adopted, about the 90-day provision, HCD has taken a position on what they believe that state law means. HCD is not the entity that issues binding legal opinions on everyone else, right? The state legislature makes the state law. I understand that you...
Let me just clarify, HCD certifies your housing element, and so, if you tick them off, I'll be kind in my, then, we're screwed. So, so, okay.
I'm not going to answer a legal, give a legal opinion on that, just to say that...
And there's two legal cases, at least, that have stated that that is not a one-time 90-day thing.
Yes, and those legal cases are also not binding on the county, and the county will follow any binding legal decisions, which I'm sure will be coming.
Will soon be here, okay.
Just to add to that, there are, this is a litigated issue in the Superior Court of Santa Clara County. There are currently two pending cases that would address this issue in our court, but they have not been resolved yet.
So, walk me through that scenario. If they say there is more than one 90-day period in a Superior Court in this district, what happens to this applicant?
We can't speculate on that, but we would, county council would confidentially advise county staff on how to proceed, given the changing legal landscape.
Does that automatically mean they have to sue, do we be able to enforce that? Or do they have any other remedy than if it's found that the county took an illegal position?
The county will advise on the interpretation of state law across all applications. We're going to take the same, you know, apply the law the same to all applications. And so, if it's clear that the law must be applied and the county is obligated to apply the law in a certain way, the county will do that for all applications.
Including ones that were previously denied erroneously?
I can't say off the top of my head right now how that would all work out.
Can we just be listening to? Commissioner Belzka?
I, I just want to agree with everything you're saying, and that's exactly what my concern was with the previous hearing, and, you know, why I said I'm torn, because although I agree with half of the ruling, I, and it's obviously a matter of interpretation, right? County is interpreting the 90-day rule one way, the applicant, HCD, several courts, and myself are interpreting it differently, and hence, hence the dilemma of how to rule on these, because, you know, if, if we, if we deny it, then they're, then they're denied and they're expired, right, and they're, they're done, they're stuck, right? So, I agree with your concern, right, that what happens, right, what happens then?
Through the chair, if I may, we are continuing, as our council said, to process applications. We are not denying the processing of the application in the case of deeming them incomplete. We will still process the application, so, we, I just want to make that clear. We're not ceasing to process the applications that come through, we continue to process them.
Understood, but you're processing them without the SB 330 protections?
Right. We're asking for applicants to submit the information of the checklist. If they submit that information, we continue to process under the SB 330 applications. When they don't, we deem them incomplete, they come before the commission, we still continue to process the applications. That was the question, they're stuck, they are not stuck, we continue to process the applications.
Yes, but as Mr. Salisbury clarified, the vesting, the SB, the builder's remedy vesting is what expires. So, I agree, the application doesn't expire, they can continue, of course, they can continue processing it, but it's no longer a builder's remedy application, it's just a standard subdivision application with all of the conditions.
Which means back to whatever the density is for whatever the underlying zoning is. Am I correct?
Right, the ultimate approval or denial could take into consideration the general plan and zoning if a project is not vested under the builder's remedy.
All right. Let me ask another theoretical question, and again, I apologize to all of you here for getting in the weeds here. What if we were to pass a motion that says, "This is incomplete, but we feel the 90-day window is still open," as part of our motion?
As I advised at the last meeting, the commission does not have authority to do that. The authority of the commission is to hear the incompleteness determination on appeal.
And why do we not have authority to do that?
There's no authority in state law or in our ordinance code for that legal question to be interpreted by the planning commission or have a determination issued about that by the planning commission.
But we can give our opinion, it just has no weight, you're saying? Because it has to be adjudicated in a court of law, that, that decision, which it is being, it sounds like, so, potentially no harm, no foul?
I think that there are also issues with respect to the Brown Act and what's on the agenda, and there are potential legal issues with including something in a motion that you don't have authority to do and isn't on the agenda and isn't before the planning commission.
Any other questions? Commissioner Cohen?
I was just curious if we had public comment and if we would be taking that now, or if we didn't have any more speakers?
No, that's our plan, is to go to public comment next. We're just trying to identify any and all issues we have with the presentation and underlying issues. Commissioner Escobar?
I'm going to hold it.
We are now going to open up the public comment, and the applicant will be the first one to speak in that capacity at 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes.
Dear members of the commission, okay, here's the rules. We file a, I mean, a preliminary application, the 180 starts when we get the letter from the county saying that they've accepted the application, not the date we file it, the date they say it's accepted.
If I, if I can...
Yeah, but legally...
Yeah, so, yeah, Kurt, I appreciate the interpretation. So, the way that, to read state law, in my opinion, there's some different interpretations, but the date you file the preliminary application, that's what sets the, a complete preliminary application, which is in the applicant's control, the county really doesn't have a role in determining what is complete under state law, state law determines that.
So, we file it, okay. All right, so, 180 from the day we file, we have subsequent 90-day periods to respond to the incomplete letters forever. So, we are in our 90-day period after, after July, or from August 1st, we have 90 days to respond. That was the same on the last application. We are, we are still in our 90-day period, and you didn't pick that up, but you picked it up on this one, so we're still in our 90-day. So, and the reason we filed an appeal is because the staff said we had lost our vested rights. That's why we filed the appeal. We had full intent on keeping going during day and addressing these issues. That's the only reason we're in front of the commission, is because staff said, "We're going to, you know, lose your vested rights, you got to file an appeal if you want to keep going." They never once told us we could keep processing that application while we were arguing over the, over the incompleteness. They never once, none of their letters, nobody ever told me that, so...
Yeah, and I'll just say, you know, there've been a lot of comments about how long this process has taken, how many resubmittals there are, and I can just say, you know, we're involved in litigation, we're, one of those lawsuits, there's more than two lawsuits dealing with this, this issue in Santa Clara County. In that litigation, we've had expert testimony submitted that makes clear, I mean, these projects often can, you know, involve four, five, you know, six resubmittals, especially when staff doesn't like the project, and that's why HCD has stepped in to say, you know, you can't just remove a project vesting based on an incompleteness notice, that would completely, basically neuter SB 330, because, because of the detail and level of discretion involved in a lot of local checklists, so...
So, Mr. Chair, if you take that position, that we're still in the 90 days, what about the application you guys just denied, that is still in the 90-day period as well? Because that's going to, this, whatever you decide here is going to, they're going to go back and forth, right?
Yeah, and if I, if I could clarify, I think with the motion, the...
I'm not, I'm not here to debate or have a discussion with you ultimately.
Yeah, and I'll just clarify...
You say what you want, I have my own feelings about this, and I'll let you know what they are, believe me, I'm not going to hide them.
Yeah, and I'll just say, so, my, the applicant's understanding, I think, is what the county's position is. Your motion for the last project was just to continue to deem the project application incomplete. You haven't, I guess, as a, as a commission, taken a position on whether we've lost our vesting, although we very strongly disagree with staff's position on that second topic.
Can, can we bring up now that other exhibit? And we'll very quickly go through these items, just to be sure that we have a clear understanding of what was submitted and what wasn't.
One of the issues on this project, and the staff did not bring, is the compatible use determination, the CUD. Laura, would you pull up that, that parcel map again, you had the whole parcel? So, this part of 100 acres, so we've got, you know, acres, I think it's 14, I don't remember, we've got two projects.
Let me, if you don't mind, let's just go through this, I don't know what number you're talking about, but if we could just go through...
Okay, let's go through that first.
1A on here, what?
Okay, site plan.
Yeah, I'm not worried about the time right now.
There are no structures on that area, it's vacant. So, it says, "All structures on site with associated improvements in that area that we're working, that we're designing for the builder's remedy, there are no structures." We've repeatedly said that to staff.
So, through the chair, if I may, the, the entire parcel is considered, so the project itself is considered the entire parcel, it's not just one area of the site.
Yeah, I don't want to get into debating them right now, I just, I want to get through, and so, we understand, on the initial set of requirements, did they or did they not complete them from, from their words? That's all we're trying to do in this process, and again, everyone, forgive me for getting into details here, so...
We responded that there was no structures in the area of the SB 330 application.
Okay, and listed in here are section C-12, 320D, wells, pipelines, sewage disposal Do you feel like you satisfied this requirement by providing anything inclusive of the section C dash, C-12 dash 2010 and 11?
Yeah, I believe we, we give all that information, yes.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Evidence showing legal creation of lot, deeds and lot legality handout, so I assume that has quite a bit more information on that.
We provided... We provided 30 pages of documents for the real estate, the grant deeds and all that other stuff as part of the application.
Okay, and do you think a part of that was legal access or not legal access?
It's on a public street, it's a public street.
Got it, okay. The next one, tentative map?
Andy. You talking about 1B? We just talked about 1B.
1B, we're done. We're going on the next one.
Go to the next one.
Two?
Okay. There are no, as part of the subdivision, that application, the initial application, architectural plans were not required.
So you did not provide floor plans?
No, we did, it was a part of the application. Laura and I talked about it. She agreed, yeah, you don't have to do it. And then the letter, she says we have to.
Floor plans and elevation plans you did not provide?
Nope. Wasn't required in the submittal.
Okay, next.
Item number three, same thing.
Same thing.
Yep. Item number four, same thing. We've talked about before, I can't do a shadow study plan without the buildings. We discussed that as well.
All right, let's talk about the Williams Act.
All right. This is where we need to go. Now, can you pull up that site plan, please? So it's part of a 100-acre parcel.
Are you referring to the site plan from the slide presentation?
The plan that you had, the initial plan you showed?
Yeah, if you, he'd say, just go through me on if you want something brought up.
Oh, Mr. Chair, can we pull that up, please?
Staff, can we pull that up, please?
Yes, give me one moment. Thank you.
You're being respectful. I just want to make sure that we're.
That's okay. I've been doing this a long time, I understand.
Spitting contest here.
Okay, you can see, so that's a whole 100 acres. Area Village One, that's where we're calling, that's a builder's remedy project. On the portion, if you're looking at it like this down this corner, there is, there's a proposed winery there that's in existing structures. So part of this whole discussion with staff is the CUD, right? Is the CUD for the whole parcel or is it just for the housing? And we've had myriad discussions in person, talking about trying to bifurcate the land, do the CUD for the winery and do the CUD for the residential development. And we have probably filed four or five different CUD applications trying to get this resolved. So we've been working with staff on that and we just can't come to an agreement. So that is, and of course, he's, well, we can't, our ordinance says this. Yeah, but it doesn't make any sense. We got two different types of uses. So we've got an issue with that.
Who has to approve the CUP? I'm asking staff now.
So the Williams Act compatible and used determination is reviewed by staff and staff recommends the determination to the director.
Okay, it's not a state agency or anything that they have to deal with. It's you guys.
No.
Okay. Okay, can we bring the other slide back up?
Give me one moment.
Thank you.
I apologize through the chair. Give me one moment.
Okay, so that was number five. We just discussed that.
Yeah, and that was one of those items where it's listed as maybe required, so.
Well, it says file for and obtain a compatible use determination.
We have filed multiple times.
And the county is responsible for approving that?
That is correct. Those applications are submitted to staff, reviewed by staff and completed by staff.
Okay, I'll, I have more on that, but let's just keep going. Fire protection information?
We've requested that letter from San Jose Water. We haven't received it yet. And that was in our response. We've requested information. We haven't got it.
Okay.
Okay.
And, okay. So you have not been able to provide that yet?
Yeah, we haven't obtained it yet.
Understand. And that's, there's one more, 6B? So is this the same, the fire hydrant information was not provided?
No, but it's based on, like it says, the total amount of square footage based on the development. We haven't designed the buildings yet, so we don't know what the total square footage is yet. So that's all part of what.
Okay, the requirement will change, but will the, will the flow that's actually coming out of the hydrants change?
No, it'll be the same. But once we get the letter from San Jose Water, we'll be able to present that to staff.
Okay. Next one, the geological report.
This is, we talked about this in the last one. We are prepared to do that. It's going, that particular geological excavation on that site is going to be about 175,000 bucks to do, because we got to do some trenches and all sorts of crazy stuff. And we said, hey, we'll do it, but we just got to make sure we have a project. So we wanted to make that more like a conditional approval after we were deemed complete. Because I can't tell my client, spend 175 grand and we end up coming here and having to ask for appeal for the project, so.
Okay, and again, sorry for interrupting you. You have.
It's okay.
Four more minutes, up to four minutes to.
Yeah, and I'll just, so I'll just close on that last point. And the Permit Streamlining Act, it does contemplate situations like this where you'll have sort of a more basic list of items required for completeness purposes. And then you can inform the applicant of other informational items that aren't necessarily SEQA-related that will be required to prepare your application for a hearing. And that's right in government code 65944, sub-part B. And that's how I interpret these may be required provisions, because they, most of them are a lot more time-consuming. They rely on third-party approvals and things that you may not necessarily be able to provide within 90 days in any way, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so, you know, and you discussed this on the last project, you know, when there's some of these inconsistent items. And you were talking about process. Escobar, you were talking about that. Once we hit those items, we still have to get those all resolved before staff can take it to the commission for a hearing. We still have to take care of the fire, whatever issues. Those all have to resolve. We have mitigation measures that would do for the environmental. All those things have to be resolved prior to coming to the public hearing. Even the application of complete just allows us to know, okay, let's spend all that money, let's get all these questions answered and let's get this thing moving forward. So there's many more checkpoints along this process where you guys get to look at and make sure we're toeing the line, so to speak, and answering all the questions and taking care of all the intricate details, fire, all those kind of things, so.
All right.
Okay? Got any other questions for us?
I'm not seeing any lights on, so.
Well, we really appreciate your time.
It doesn't mean no one's home, it just means.
This whole thing's been kind of crazy, so we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll continue on with the public comments.
We currently have 17 speakers in chambers. And if anyone in the Zoom room would like to speak, please raise your hand. There are five hands raised, which takes the count to 22. We normally do one minute for up to 20 speakers. Over that, it drops to 30 seconds. What would you like to do?
Tell me how many there were total?
There are currently 22.
22? We'll go ahead and go with one minute apiece. And if I could just say, if we are dealing with the completeness of the information, if you have comments that you want to make about whether or not you think the project is worthy or not worthy, you're entitled to make them. But right now, we are dealing with just the completeness of the information. If you agree with people who've spoken before you and want to just mention that and not go through the whole thing, that would be possible. I'll just put it that way, so.
I'll call up the first five speakers. Kyung Min Hong, Peggy Thurman, Martin Thurman, Diana Martin Orloff, and Denise Akum.
May I start?
You may begin.
Good evening. My name is Kyung Min Hong. I'm a resident of the Almeden Valley. I wrote some notes, but actually hearing the arguments, I want to point out that they are not willing to finish the geotechnical survey because of what cost. And I don't know why we're discussing the, whether to give an extension. They clearly stated that they are not willing to provide that unless the project is approved. So please consider that in your judgment. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Peggy Thurman. I urge you to deny this application. The applicant has filed five incomplete applications, each one wasting public time and resources. Anywhere else, school, work, you don't get endless retries. We all follow the rules. So should they. Beyond the procedural failures, there are serious concerns. No proposed street access, inadequate fire hydrant water pressure, septic design uphill with seismic risk of failure. Not to mention the over 200 legacy oak trees that would be destroyed and all of the habitat. This is not a serious or responsible proposal. It is an abuse of process and a threat to our environment, wildlife, and public safety. Please deny this.
Good evening. My name is Diana Martin Orloff, and I've lived in, on Spring Path Lane for 33 years. I am against the appeal and hope that you deny this. Number one, although it's located in Almeden Valley, this is not a valley location. This is on a steep hill as you climb Camden Avenue out of the valley. And on that steep hillside are these wonderful legacy oak trees that would be taken out, removed completely to place these homes. That's a real concern in our winters when we have a lot of watershed and when there are serious rains on how that would destabilize that hillside and the impact of drainage coming down onto both Circle Hill and Spring Path Lane. But the second issue is around the septic field. They're talking about putting in a large leach field above Kirk Land Court. Now imagine that being placed well above your home and adjacent to your home. That's.
All right, thank you.
That's my key concerns.
If you think it's long, make sure you start with your most important points.
Good evening. My name is Denise Akum. My husband, our twin sons, and I live close to the boundary of the proposed Circle Hill development. And I'm here to ask you to reject Mr. LaBarbera's appeal. I would like to think that Mr. Barbera wanted to be a good neighbor and would have fully researched his property for any possible hazards and would have addressed them and would have done so early in his planning. And I would also like to think Mr. LaBarbera would have wanted to notify the county and the public of his research and of his solutions by submitting it with his application in order to provide public assurances and transparency. Instead, Mr. LaBarbera appears to have cut corners repeatedly by not providing information on property hazards and possible solutions. Mr. LaBarbera appears to be acting irresponsibly. And in my opinion, I believe an irresponsible neighbor is a threat to my safety, the safety of my family, and of my neighbors. Thank you.
Good evening. As a parent, my child keeps coming back with the wrong arguments. There comes a time when no means no. This applicant already has five chances and very similar timeline like the previous project, and we still cannot meet the county's requirements. If they can't get it right after five times, who says they will do it after six or seven times? They want to play it on their terms. And at some point, there is time to say that the rules, that's how the rules work. Beyond the process failures, the project itself has posed serious risks. Fire safety, large septic septic on top of our property that is unstable ground. I'm really concerned about that. We talked about the 250 oak trees that are being cut down and not holding the grounds any longer. This is all very dangerous. And let's not forget about the vital habitat for bobcats, owls, turkeys, deer, and many other species. This is a gateway to the Santa Cruz Mountains. Look at the aerial pictures, aerial pictures going to the ocean. It's all green. So this is not responsible planning. It's repeated misuse of public resources. Thank you. Please deny this.
And you are Mr. Thurman? The next group of speakers is Rachel Panic, Justin Sanderson, Jula Shalesko, Richard Chin, and Gabriel Gregg.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Rachel Paruk, and I am a resident within 300 feet of this proposed project. I thank the county for having standards and deadlines for housing applications. It is indeed for the safety of all, the new homeowners and the existing. This particular project is negligent in both standards and deadlines, as has been submitted before. There were five submissions. They were all incomplete and missing critical infrastructure details and hazard planning. I'm kind of going off script here, too, in the fact that there were 10 applications submitted by others who did complete. So I just wonder why was this not been able to be complete properly? I thank you for your time.
Hello, I'm Julia Shalesko. I live a few yards from the proposed development. I've been living in the area for about 17 years. And I just want to make note that the developer has failed to provide critical safety information, including geotechnical studies. And I'm going to refer back to his comment. I don't understand why you don't do geological studies first before building. It doesn't sound right to start a project before you know the safety of the land. We have a high water table, and when it rains, I get one or two inches underneath my home. And many of us have sump pumps to remedy this. The hill that they are planning to build on is steep with plans to have a septic leach field. The septic leach field will be higher than the water level, the water table. So you can imagine the water that would be fouling up our crawl space and contaminating the springs in that area. As a resident of Pierce Ranch community, I am deeply concerned about the risks that these incomplete applications pose. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shalesko. I love it.
Hello, my name is Richard. I live on Spring Path Lane within 300 feet of this proposed development. I didn't hear anything from the developer that says this is a complete plan. I heard, I'm not doing the geotechnical. I heard, I haven't designed the houses yet. In which universe is that considered submitting a complete application? 90 days may not have expired from April 17, but just writing back a response does not make something that was incomplete, complete. Okay? It was still incomplete and up to the fifth letter, he still had the same all outstanding items. Okay? So I urge the planning commission to understand that you are ruling on the completeness determination by your planning staff who have spent a year looking at it and still deem it incomplete. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Justin Sanderson. I live on Spring Path Lane directly about four houses below the proposed development on Circle Hill. I mean, everybody's, you've heard from everybody already, you know, Spring Path Lane takes its name from a spring that runs down the street. When you put a giant septic tank up above, in an area that is seismicly unsafe, the consequences could be dire. And we're very concerned about that, living on this hill. Other than that, you know, four or five applications, you know, seems like an excessive amount to get the right information in. And if this is your job and you're a developer and you can't submit the right information, why should we trust that you're going to be doing the right things down the line? That's it. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Gabriel Gregg. I'm a neighbor and I'm also a litigation attorney with a specialty in appellate law that has been practicing in California for almost 30 years. I am here to urge rejection of the strained and unsupported legal arguments set forth in applicant's appeal letter and independently support the legal analysis taken by the staff in their recommendation. I think the applicant is plainly wrong under applicable statutory framework that the operative application checklists are the ones in effect when the applicant's first preliminary application was submitted. I think if you examine the law and as the staff correctly analyzes, it's clear under the Permit Streamlining Act that the operative checklist are the one in place when the formal application is submitted. And in any event, it's clear that under the checklist, clearly in effect, the applicant In any event, it's clear that under the checklist, clearly in effect, the application was defective. And the application, notwithstanding skepticism, also clearly missed the 90-day period. Thank you.
And the last group of speakers, Emily Lewin, Andrew Munn, Alice Kaufman, Laura Hall, Harold Hall, Beth Fricksdale, and Randy Prince.
Good evening. My name is Emily Lewin, and I, my husband and I bought our home on Spring Path Lane about a year ago. As my neighbors have pointed out, the applicant has missed deadline after deadline and failed to address important issues, even after receiving several notices. This pattern raises serious questions about their commitment to following proper procedures and addressing county and community concerns. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Munn, and I'm a resident of Almeden. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to support the county's decision to deem the application incomplete. I, like many of my neighbors here tonight, have concerns with this development and its application. The development will be built on a hillside with an extensive retaining wall system, and yet the application does not include required geological surveys. The development is adjacent to the Quicksilver Park and will be susceptible to wildfires, but yet it does not have the proper fire hydrant flow letter. The county has been more than reasonable with the applicant by providing almost a year and a half and five resubmissions, and by the county's own checklist and the applicant's own statements made tonight, the application is still incomplete. I request that the board deny this appeal. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Rousher and Commissioners. Alice Kaufman with Green Foothills. I won't reiterate everything I said last time around. I do want to spend my time right now addressing something that just came up during the question and answers from County Council, indicating that it is, it is not certain at this point what authority the commission might have to reject a project under, after the SEQA analysis is complete, if there are significant unmitigatable impacts, which for any other project would be grounds for denying a project. It's not legally clear whether this commission would have those grounds. And I would say that that makes it really, really critical that these basic questions that are part of a completed application be required before an application is deemed complete. If you're not going to have the chance to consider those later, you really need to consider those before an application is deemed complete, or you're going to, you could end up with these issues that we're talking about with seismic issues, liquefaction, lack of water for firefighting, and all the rest of it. So I would definitely urge you to deny the appeal.
Hello, my name is Laura Hall. I have lived on Circle Hill Drive for 40 years. My house is just one house away from the new project. This project is very poorly thought out, and the builder is not responding in good faith to the county with the information that the county needs, even after many iterations. I am particularly concerned about the fire hazards of this project and the builder's lack of concern regarding those fire hazards and ensuring there is adequate flow from the fire hydrants. The hillside is very steep, and the lack of city sewer connection requires a leach field, and there's significant runout in the winter. I have flooding in my front yard every year, so I think that's not going to be a viable solution. The property also backs up to Almeden Quicksilver and is a key wildlife corridor to the Santa Cruz Mountains. I recommend you deny this appeal of the builder's incomplete application. Thank you.
My name is Harold Hall. I'm a software engineer. I am not a lawyer, but I know something about iterative development. There is one 90-day period written in law. Then a judge looked at it and said, development's tricky. There's gray areas. So in that particular case, they had tried to react to something, they reacted to it, and they got the stuff in afterwards before the court case was even decided. They were acting in good faith. This developer is not doing that. Just take one item, the flow rate. First letter said it wasn't there, second letter said it wasn't, fifth letter said it wasn't. He says, we submitted for it. That's all there is to it. He can have extra time, but not unlimited. Thank you for your work.
Hi, my name is Beth, and I also want you to deny this appeal. I live in the neighborhood, and I'm very scared. Last night, we had a thunder and lightning storm, and I was just thinking, like, there's this non-serious person who's, I think honestly, playing games. He's refusing to answer very straightforward and reasonable questions that your staff is looking for to understand this project better, to know that he doesn't even have a plan yet for how we're going to have a fire hydrant. It's terrifying. So please deny the appeal. Thank you.
My name is Randy Prince. I live on Spring Path Lane. Due to the agricultural zoning designation, this property and its owners have benefited from decades of tax breaks granted by the Williamson Act. That's why I find it so egregious that the applicant is so cavalier about wasting your time and our tax dollars, while their lawyers and consultants repeatedly disrequired the requirements and deadlines set forth by the planning commission. I therefore respectfully request this Board of Supervisors deny the applicant's appeal so that they learn a lesson and learn to respect your time and this process, and so that you and we don't have to continually, forever, as he said, as Mr. Anderson said, continually rehash this issue. Thank you for your time.
We, we are the planning commission. We did not get a promotion to Board of Supervisors, but thank you for that. We are appointed, not elected.
Our first speaker in the Zoom room is Gwen Hacker. Please accept the unmute to begin speaking.
My name is Gwen. I'm a 30-year resident of Almeden. I'd like, first like to thank you, planning commissioners, for volunteering your time to consider issues related to land use in the county. I very much appreciate your civic engagement. If a developer sincerely cares about their project and the community that will be impacted, the least he can do is submit a complete application. The developer has had multiple opportunities to complete the application. The missing items are not minor or trivial. Given the Circle Hill site is in a high fire hazard severity zone, a landslide hazard zone, and a seismic hazard zone, I'm very concerned that these hazards will not be addressed with true concern if the proper attention can't even be given to the application. This approach also seems to disrespect the time of these dedicated citizens and the oak woodland habitat that would be destroyed. I trust the county has established application requirements and a process, including deadlines, for valid reasons. I ask that you maintain your staff's position that the developer can't proceed under the builder's remedy and deny the appeal. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nancy Saron. Please accept the unmute.
Hi, good evening. My name is actually Robert Saroni. I'm Nancy's husband. I'm a third-generation resident here in San Jose and have lived in the Almeden Valley the past 40-plus years, 36 of which have been here in the Pierce Ranch development, just a few blocks from the Circle Hill project. As you heard, I'm in agreement with everybody before me. I'm strongly urging this commission to deny the appeal for the Circle Hill project. As we've heard, the developers submitted five incomplete applications over the past two years, actually, if you look to when the preliminary was originally submitted, and they still have not provided these seven key reports. I think Peggy outlined those pretty, pretty articulately. The counties, you know, rightfully deem their application incomplete, so we have, how many more times are we going to allow them to, you know, complete the, submit incomplete applications? Each attempt, each attempt has already consumed public resources, staff time, and community. So as been mentioned many times, we've got hazardous zones, including fire hazards, landslide, and seismic. These are all very important to us, so I'd please
The next speaker is R. Please accept the unmute.
Hi there. This is Russell Aikoff. I live on Mary Monte Court, one and a half blocks below the parcel. Our home was built in 1980s. These homes and the resulting runoff have settled long since they were built. This is adjacent to Quicksilver Park, which equals Cinnabar Rock, which equals Mercury. Hydrology was not discussed tonight, and it's as an open item. I can only hope, for the sake of our fruit trees, our gardens, and the lawns our children play in, that we are not introducing a different type of runoff from this very steep hill to us just below. I realize this planning commission meeting is not to review the merits of the zones, yet I noted that the appellate architects seem to reference a legal action with the word choice of repercussions. As your Santa Clara County neighbor, I want to state that I would prefer my county tax dollars be spent settling with a litigious builder than defending against my neighbor's contentions that our county has subjected
And our final speaker is Sylvia Ramirez. Please accept the unmute. And you should have control of your mic. Sylvia, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
You can begin.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Sylvia Ramirez. So me and my husband are both here, but I'll be speaking. I live directly adjacent to the proposed development. I'm not going to reiterate with all my neighbors have said and all the things that they're concerned about, because I'm, of course, equally concerned. My, I, I really didn't appreciate, the builder talks a lot about process. Well, it seems to me, from listening to the presentation that the staff provided, that there was a lot of process that they seem to want to ignore and refuse to do, and that really concerns me, the trust this developer to do something proper in the future, that they're basically telling us, we're not going to do this, because we're not going to do this until this is approved. Well, no, for those of us that live right adjacent to this project, we want to see these things, see these protections and these standards kept for our protection and the protection of, you know, people that live here. So thank you, and I
That concludes our speakers.
Does any commissioners have any questions of any of the people that spoke? If not, we'll close the public comment. Oh, actually, we still need time for rebuttal. You're waiving that time. Okay. So I will close the public hearing, or public comment portion, public hearing. Commissioner Escobar.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of comments that it's disturbing to me to have an applicant come up here and profess to be a subject matter expert on all things related to this project. We have multiple staff members doing their job very diligently, and I trust that. At the same time, I know that they are doing their job because it is their job to look out for all of us who live in the area, may not live in the area, but also to protect our county and those that live here. At the same time, their comment then turns into, but I'm ignorant, I didn't know. So that should buy me more time. That should buy me the continuance of builder's remedy. Quite frankly, builder's remedy is a privilege. It is not something that is a right. The right is to file an application, to build, to do all the things you want to do. That is a right in this county. But builder's remedy is something that was born out of, I don't really want to say, but it was born out of something that we didn't intend, but here we are, and we're making the best of it. To know that there are 10 other entities that were able to meet the obligations put forward without all of this discussion of, I'm a subject matter expert, but then when it suits my purpose, I'm ignorant to what's happening. I find that I'm looking at some of the same issues in this one that were in the last one that were chose to be ignored. We're talking about fire. We're talking about geo. Why? If they were different things, I might believe that there was some ignorance, that there was unintentioned shortcomings, but I don't find that here. And I think that to continue to have a conversation about time when time is not what we're here to talk about, we're here to discuss, did you or did you not submit a complete application? I'm looking at this. It's not complete. It's not whether I agree or disagree with your version of may or must. If I'm told I need to submit, that's a must. We are not putting things on paper so you can go figure it out and waste time. That's not what staff is here for. And so from that perspective, I find myself exactly where I was on the last item, and I will not support an appeal. I will be in support of denying the appeal because I feel that I'm looking at exactly what I just looked at in the last one, and it's a pattern. And I, in good conscience, will not overlook rules, laws, and ordinances that are put here to protect all of us, those of us that are not subject matter experts, but our staff are, and that's their role, and they're doing it, and I have every confidence in them that they would not put something forward that would be detrimental to our residents of our county. So I don't know if others wish to speak, but I am ready to put a motion on the floor. Okay. So I motion that we deny the
Let me, we'll come back to you for a motion.
Okay, sure.
Commissioner O'Donohue.
Yeah, this is a question for staff. Of the 10 330 applications that are complete, have all of those been submitted with floor plans, fire, flow data, if applicable, energy plans, geologic reports, and septic clearance?
I am not familiar with each and every one of those applications, but in the broad strokes, yes, all of those applications are determined to be complete based on the checklist and based on the nature and location of those projects. And fire flow data in particular is always a critical item, and those other projects provided it.
Okay, thank you. And I definitely agree with Commissioner Escobar that this application's not complete. I'm not confident in the 90-day rule that we're enforcing, so I just want to throw that out there.
Commissioner Cohen, then Levy, then Belska.
I just had a procedural question. I'll hold it.
Okay. Commissioner Levy.
All right. I tend to concur that the application is not complete. There are two items that really stand out. One is the fire hydrants, again, the water flow, and the second one is the geologic report. Considering where it's located, that they're planning on septic, it's steep, they're going to be removing all the trees, you know, a geologic report would be pretty critical for this, and to see those two not there makes it clear that the application is not complete. Again, as I mentioned earlier, there is always room for debate on other items within the application that I think there's, it could be honest discussion that where staff sees it one way and the applicant sees it the other. But what concerns me about the builder's remedy is something we've talked about, is you don't have many floodgates where you can say, okay, a project is really not going to fit, except for this phase as well. And I mean, it's not necessarily the purpose of this phase, but when you see something like that, it's nice to have this type of gate in place. The builder's remedy is really meant somewhat to punish jurisdictions for not getting their housing element in on time, but it's also meant to promote housing where it's, where it's supposed to be built, you know, in urban areas, in higher density areas. It's supposed to be meant to provide housing for all levels of income. This is not what this project is. This is going to be a steep hillside, adjacent to, or where there's, you know, significant removal of trees, and it's supposed to have builder's remedy projects where there's services. Well, if they're putting septic on a steep hill, there's not services. We're not sure there's going to be water, you know, abundant water for this. So this is really not in conformance with the builder's remedy as a concept, and it's definitely not in conformance with the county's goal of putting development in urban areas and not in rural areas, and especially not on steep hillsides. So, you know, I'm sort of happy to deny this project because I don't think it belongs where it does, but I'm, you know, want to deny it based on it not being a complete application. So I will be supportive. If, when the motion comes, I'll be supporting it.
Commissioner Belska.
So I absolutely agree that this project does not conform to the spirit of what builder's remedy is, but that's my personal opinion, and that's not on the table today. I also agree that this application was incomplete. Unfortunately, since we do need to abide by the law, and I am interpreting the law, that there's multiple 90-day periods, I can't support a denial without an not-expired application.
I have just a couple of really brief comments, too. I just want to say thank you, everyone, for being civil and respective. That is, well, that was a procedure. That is, well, that was a procedural, oh. Why don't you guys just rip that thing apart and each have your own? Where's, where's the county budget here for getting an extra microphone? Commissioner Hederly.
That's what happens when you sit on the end. I just want to remind us that I think it's really important that we resist the temptation to start evaluating, "Well, this checklist item is really important, and this checklist item is also really important, and this one, I don't know so much about that. I might not find that as compelling." That's not really our job. Those checklists are developed by staff based on our county's ordinances. So I just, I don't, I'm not meaning to scold, but I think it does, it's easy to get caught up in the emotions of a project like this and, and start thinking about, "Well, is that really..." When you look at the project that we, the appeal that we denied last month, it was a tiny, a single item. So I, I just find myself reminding myself, and I'll share that thought with, with all the rest of you. I think it's important that we do keep our eye on the ball on what the question is before us. And the 90-day rule, of course, is not before us, but in my opinion, they, I see they've been doing this for 15 months now, with the exact same list of deficiencies over and over and over again, and that doesn't seem to me like they've been denied an opportunity to, to iterate on, on the details of the project. So, and I want to thank everybody who came out today and for your patience. I know it's a long night, and it's hard to sit through, through all of us and all of you, and I appreciate your participation. Thank you.
As I was saying, thank you for being respectful. Just a couple of brief comments on SB 330. Initially, we, we all know that housing is desperately needed, and many of my colleagues have talked to that. This year, or this cycle, the state really moved the goalposts on it, so we, the county submitted, and they kept asking for more and more and more and more. Sounds like a government organization. I don't know. But that delayed and opened up this huge window where SB 330 projects could be submitted. And so while I do think there is a need for housing and everything, and at first I was very much for SB 330 as a concept, we are now stuck with something that is one of the poorest planning things, and it creates headaches for the county, creates headaches for the neighbors and everything, so. But I am deeply committed to process, and whatever the law is, we need to follow that. I can't fault it for people who are trying to develop projects within, within the law. So I, I am, all of my focus here on, is, and I didn't even look at these projects, because I don't want to let that interfere at all. This is just, was the application complete, and all of my questions were trying to find that answer. So again, thank you, everyone, for your inputs today. I do want to hand it over to Commissioner Escobar, who would like to make a motion, I believe.
Thank you. I motion that we deny the appeal and uphold the Department of Planning and Development determination that the application for the Circle Hill Housing Development Project is incomplete.
Second. So we have a motion from Commissioner Escobar, a second from Commissioner Levy, to deny the appeal and uphold the Department of Planning and Development determination that the application for the Circle Hill Housing Development Project is incomplete. Can we take a vote?
Commissioner Hederly.
Wait, hang on a second. Commissioner Cohen, was your procedural thing, is that still relevant before we vote, or...
It's still relevant, but I'll ask the question after we vote. Thank you.
Yeah, I apologize. I should have circled back on that one. Sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Cohen.
Yes.
Commissioner Belska.
No.
Commissioner Levy.
Aye.
Commissioner Escobar.
Yes.
Vice Chairperson O'Donohue.
No.
Chairperson Rousher.
I approve.
Motion carries 5-2.
Back to our, again, thank you, staff, for your hard work and presentation on this, including Senior Planner Laura Tran. We will, I do not have a report for item eight. Do any of the commissioners have reports they would like to make at this time? Not seeing any. Does County Council have a report?
I do not have anything to report. Thank you.
Planning Commission Secretary, who's acting is that? No one? We'll skip that one then. Director, Deputy Director of Planning Services, Department of Planning and Development. Do, can we get a longer title for that?
Wow. Jaclyn Nociano, Director of Planning and Development. I just want the commission to know that we have issued effective Monday, September 29th. We will have new office hours. We will be open from Monday through Thursday, 8 to 12, and 1 to 5. Fridays, we will be open 8 to 12, 1 to 5, but building services only, limited active permits. Tuesdays and Thursdays, we will have environmental health, roten airports, and our fire marshal office available to service the public. So I just wanted to let the planning commission know of those changes.
And did we have any correspondence we received?
We did not.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any. I would like to just say, before we adjourn, again, thank you, staff, for these. I know we have some more coming up on October 7th. It would have been nice to have, in our work plan, we have a study session on SB 330. I'm learning just as much from the appellants and their attorneys and whatnot than I, and so, can we make it happen?
Jaclyn Nociano, Director of Planning and Development. We can make it happen. And one thing that we heard tonight through the chair, that you also desire when these applications come forward, that whatever the incomplete information is, we include it in the packet for the commission's review. And County Council has concurred that that would be helpful, and so we will move forward with, in that matter. Is that fair?
When does the notice go out for the October 7th meeting? Are we within the 10-day period?
The notice of hearing has already been published and a mail-out done. The agenda will publish, is expected to publish next Tuesday, which is the regular one week before the meeting.
Okay, so the next meeting then is October?
October 7.
But no, I'm saying after that is October 26.
October 20, one moment, 23.
23?
Yes.
Okay. It's a big ask, but can we, on that meeting, have an SB, I mean, this, this is, we're struggling in front of everybody here, and maybe we, we just climbed that mountain on our, on our own just now, but it would be nice to kind of understand things a little bit better.
We'll, we'll get with County Council and see what we can do, and then meet with you offline.
All right. Appreciate it. So then we will adjourn. We already did approve, the next regular meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers here. Thank you.